Good evening, everybody. It is March 4th, 2020, and this is our school committee meeting. We start by reading our vision statement. The Ashland Public Schools cultivates the academic and social emotional growth of each student through a supportive collaborative innovative and challenging environment. Students will develop into self motivated, resilient lifelong learners who embrace their role as responsible contributors to a global community. This meeting is being recorded by WACA Cable TV. And we have a very full agenda this evening with a lot of important topics, starting with our call to order. Opening procedures, agenda, review and adoptions. We will have, I don't know if we have recognitions and student presentations. But it is on the agenda. We have time for public comment. We will have our public budget hearing this evening on the FY22 school budget. A presentation from the Ashland Residents for Equity and Action Group. District's efforts in anti racist education. The superintendent's update COVID-19 and the presentation of a parent teacher survey regarding in person learning. Superintendent's contract, assistant superintendent update warrant approvals, if there are any. And the consent actions include the minutes of January 29th, 2021, February 4th, 2021, February 8th, 2021. And then there will be acceptance of gifts and donations if there are any committee reports of activities. Member updates, action items, and then we will adjourn. So I will take attendance and ask the school committee members to just indicate that you're okay with the order of business this evening. Start with you, Mr. Kendall.
Here and yes.
Kathy Bates?
Here and yes.
Mark Terry?
Here and yes.
And Aaron Williams, are you here? Aaron Williams is absent at the moment. Okay, so we will get started then. Are there recognitions and student presentations, Jim?
No.
Not this evening. Okay, and then I will ask if there's anybody here who would like to offer public comment. And then seeing none. I am going to move. Or ask somebody to make a motion to. Enter into our budget hearing in accordance with Mass General Law's Chapter 71, Section 38. This is our annual. Budget hearing and we invite members of the public to this hearing on the proposed FY22 school budget. We have a motion.
I'm not sure we need one.
Yeah, I think you just declare it open and then.
And then declare it closed when we're done. So.
I think we need a motion to clear, to close up with this, like, starting a meeting.
Okay.
So you just started it.
So the budget hearing has begun. And I'm going to ask Mr. Adams, please to give us your presentation.
Great, thank you. I'm going to share my screen here. Get in present mode. Good evening. Thank you to the school committee and thank you for the admin team here. I'm gonna. A lot of them will speak this evening with regard to the budget itself. And as required by Master of Law, we are to present our budget in a public setting and I want to make sure that. Folks fully understand that this is a process that has taken numerous months to. Pull together all of the administrators, directors, principals, Chris Matthew with his first budget with us. Going through the process. It's a lot of work to get to a position where we feel. That we're offering to the school committee for approval of a budget that that not only moves our school district forward. But takes into account a number of things such as preparing a fiscally responsible budget. That does meet our needs, provides adequate funding. That falls within our blueprint for continuous improvement, but also that is in alignment with conversations with with the town. I think that's critically important that that folks understand we are constantly in communication. Town manager Michael Herbert and I are always communicating about our budgets. As you know, past practice over the past few years has been to focus on a number of a 3.75 to 3.78% increase. And that's what the the range that we typically work in. And we go through that process. Each year's a challenge for sure, as we have, as you know. We are not a revenue making machine for public entities and when we're trying to to develop a budget. That is falls within the guidelines presented to us from the town. It's a challenge when we don't know our actual numbers coming from the state and what our town revenue numbers will look like. So there's a lot of. You know. Conservative approaches to the revenues that we have that are coming in. For instance, the chapter 70 funding, which is for those who are listening. The the aid that comes from the state for school. Based on population, your demographic within your population, et cetera. And when the governor's budget first comes out, that's typically a low number. And what I would say is because of COVID. This year, there's been some discrepancy with regard to enrollment and enrollment numbers are down across the Commonwealth. Partly because of homeschool and partly because a number of students are no longer or who are not enrolling kindergarten, for instance, numbers are down across the Commonwealth. Families are just choosing not to sign their kids up yet. Well, that number impacts and can have a negative impact on a lot of communities. With regard to the aid coming in and it no different than Ashland. So in terms of our current funding coming from the state, we're pretty level. It's probably an $80,000 difference right now increase, but they used our. Current enrollment numbers, which impacts us negatively and you'll see that in a moment when I share a couple of slides. So that's that's the process. We begin having the conversation. How are we going to make this work? So what you'll see is the budget I'm proposing. Is a $1.3 million increase or a 3.78% increase over FY21. That falls within the parameters with the exception, you know, you know, probably a $50,000 difference would get us to 3.75, which is what the town is. Has asked ours is at 3.78 at this current time. So what does that mean and how do we get there? And I think what's important is that FY21, our final appropriated budget number. As you know, and maybe the community doesn't fully understand is we have an agreement. The town and in the school system as we looking through the the budget numbers that in the fall. We adjust our revenue and our expenses. So our operating budget number changes year to year in the fall. Because we have a pretty conservative approach. One, two, we don't have a budget that's been passed at the state level. So we don't know our actual numbers. And you know, Mr. Herbert would tell you, we don't, we don't know what our local revenue and local receipts numbers will come in at. I can say today, I was certainly very happy to hear that the revenue numbers at the state. Are well above what they anticipated for the the their projections and well above last year's numbers at this time. So so that holds out hope that that's more money will be coming through to the. Chapter 70, as well as the circuit breaker, which is for our special ed reimbursement. Those are all things that we have to keep an eye on. And it's hard in March to predict that when quite often we don't have a budget until July at the state level. So folks who are who are out there looking at that. You'll notice it's a small budget in a nutshell this year, partly because of. Being thoughtful of COVID, being thoughtful of our our needs and staying within that parameter of of what the town has asked us to do. So we have about $935,000 in salaries. What I will say is we still have open contracts that we need to negotiate. And so this number could change and we just have to be thoughtful of that. Before I get into the personnel, let me just walk through a couple of the other items because they're not as large as as new personnel. But increase in general transportation, that's our busing, part of our contract. Facilities expenses again with COVID and even thinking about moving forward. Next year, some of the additional expenses that we're going to have in terms of cleaning. You know, that's important that we identify that and allocate some resources to that. Curriculum, you know, Dr. Kyra can speak to that in a moment and but. One of the things that we we will continually do is increase. And try to increase the amount of money that we're providing for professional development, but in house professional development and. As we get to a little bit later on, when we're talking about our efforts in anti racist education, et cetera. Monies that are allocated there. Technology upgrades. Obviously, this has been an interesting year. And we have lots of Chromebooks now for every child in the district. We quickly went from a. You know, a district that was not a one to one to a district that is one to one, but along with that comes. Upgrades, not only to the need to continually upgrade some of our our hardware, but our software that exists in our internet. Access, et cetera. And then we do have some anticipated retirement savings. So we do have. By February 1st, we get notice from educators when they are anticipating to retire. And this is representative of that number. So.
Can I just ask you a quick question on that?
Yeah.
Just because it's only a question about the chart in front of us.
Yep.
The second box there, you've got net of expected retirement savings.
Yeah.
It's that, so when I guess when I think about that, that to me says. At 935 is increases already accounting for net accounting for, should that just be taken out?
It should be taken out, Mark, and I'm sorry. Yeah, I did not. Catch that earlier. That's.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's good. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't counted twice.
Yeah, no, I I wanted to, I I broke it out, which I don't always do, but I wanted to see how significant it is this year. Now, what what we have to understand is this is anticipated, right? So someone, and and I want to be clear because that number could fluctuate quite a bit depending upon whomever we hire. To fill the role of a teacher. So if a second grade teacher is retiring at at 90,000. One would assume maybe we're going to hire a master's degree at at 55,000. So then we extrapolate that, but that doesn't always work. We might get a. You know, a highly specialized individual, for instance, like a physics teacher. Who has a doctorate and is at the top step. And you may, you may not get any savings because you can't find anyone to fill the role. At a. At a lesser value. So so these are just anticipated and we'll see what happens. So let me get to the personnel because I think that that's still a big number, right? I mean, if this 357,000 was not part of our budget package. That number drops significantly and our total increase is. Is well under 3% for the year. And but. Our job is to figure out how are we going to continually move our district forward? Identify the areas that are critical to our need. And while being thoughtful and respectful and fiscally responsible. And we have worked really hard at developing a lot of programs, in house programs, especially with our special education students. And you'll you'll notice that that means we have to increase our personnel because as kids matriculate from one building to another building. Or come into our system with with really unique needs. We want to make sure that we're able to to keep them in our our district because we believe morally that's the right thing to do. But it also fiscally makes great sense to do that. So as you notice. In the personnel requests. Most of the stuff we're looking for, Kathy's smiling, and I'm gonna have Kathy walk through it. For the most part deals with. Some of our highly specialized programs, but then there are a couple of positions at the bottom where I'll have a conversation after. So Kathy, if you want to. Please run through those five and a half FTEs.
Sure. Thank you all very much for the time to talk about. Servicing unique learners and also I want to say ahead of time. Thank you to both the Ashland community, but especially the school committee for what has been unwavering support. For students with unique needs. It's been a blessing truly to to work in this district for the past decade and have the support of the community and the school committee. In being able to build programs that appropriately support kids with unique learning profiles. So as Superintendent Adams had said, part of the struggle with building the programs is. That it has to be constantly monitored to make sure that the programs continue to support these students that have intensive needs and so. Much of what I have on my list certainly is towards that effort, but also it's also in recognition. Of the fact that we have a higher volume of need as well. So for instance, the point five FTE for the occupational therapist. Is a recognition that we just simply have greater numbers of students who are needing. The expertise of an occupational therapist both for assessment. As well as for the supervision of the Coda and themselves delivering direct instruction to students. We have this year and last year needed to contract for increased hours for an OT. Because we were just over. The abilities of the staff that we have in place for being able to do both assessment and services. The full time BCBA position, we have one already in the district, but we have many students who have BCBA services in need. That are aging upwards in our district. So now we have students. At all of our buildings who need the support in services of the BCBA. And again, when I think about what this represents, we also still do contract for BCBA time from agencies. So I'm hoping with the support of getting a full time BCBA position added to the district. That we will be able to reduce that contractual use that we do have. And be able to support our students who were able to maintain within our district. So that would allow the district to have two full time BCBAs within all five of our, well, across all five of our schools. The language based teacher at Mendez was a position that I had asked for last year as well. And this year I'm asking for it again. We by numbers just simply have too many students to be able to. Have a language based classroom that maintains the student teacher ratios and keeps to small group instruction. And so I really feel very strongly that we need to add this position to Mendez in order to reach all the students that are identified. With language based need. And you know, when you think about the foundational skills of literacy. Mendez is definitely the building that is building that for students and the elementary schools before and and. Mendez with Lucy Colkin's instructional change has really dedicated tremendous effort and resources of all staff. To try to continue to grow our ability to provide sound literacy development for our students. But we do need the language based teacher. We have one classroom right now at Mendez and we desperately need to have two. And then finally, the ABA par professionals really represent the fact that our kids are. Okay, are aging upwards and as a result, they continue to need that support by ABA par professionals. To be able to have as much inclusion, meaningful inclusion as possible and to also benefit from. The interventions and plans that are in place for the programming. We need three probably at Warren do both to. Many of the students that are. Returning back into the district or returning to in person instruction from this year where they were choosing remote. But we also have several students, Sarah can give me the exact number, but I think it's between eight and 10 depending. Students rising way preschool program into Warren. So they're going to need that ABA support and then we need one at Mendez. Again, because of the aging upwards of students from Warren into Mendez. And Mendez isn't losing so many and it's same for Warren. Warren isn't graduating up so many. So. That kind of explains the four FTE ABA par professionals.
Questions for Kathy before we move to the next two positions?
Um, I guess I have one of, somebody else is, I can't see who's trying to raise their hand on this. This mode here. Sorry, I guess I'll go. Kathy, can you talk a little bit about how these positions? Were keeping students in the district as opposed to, you know, like, would we be sending more kids out of district if you don't have these positions? And sort of at what scale?
Um, yes, I I do believe that that would be true. I think the. Language based teacher represents somebody who can give. Explicit instruction with regard to literacy for students that if we don't deliver, certainly parents have the. Fear that their students aren't going to be a solid readers. They won't be proficient. They'll need more support. And we do need to have that intensive small group kind of. Across all content within that grade, whether it be three, four or five. Broken down to. Methods of teaching that work best for those students that have those language based needs. You need to not only change your pacing, you need to change your methodology, you need to preview, review, you need to. Incorporate speech pathologist into the classroom as well to help with comprehension strategies as well as decoding strategies. So you know, your model of teaching across all the content within the each of the grades really has to to be mindful of that language based need. And we do have a lot of identified kids with SLD and language based need at Mendez. Too many to have them in one classroom for a language based teacher. So if we didn't have this position added in. I do think that we would be looking at certainly some parents being nervous that the students weren't receiving appropriate instruction and. Questioning their, you know, teams, whether or not it would make more sense to send their child to a school like the Carol. Or Landmark or, you know. Are, you know, quite honestly, ethically fearful that I would be not doing right by each of the students that we're talking about. In terms of the ABA par professionals in the BCBA, those professionals typically are working with students who are on the autism. Spectrum and we have, I think, in Ashland really seeing. And I haven't yet felt like I've reached the plateau. We continue to see kind of a rise of that profile of student. And not only a rise of that profile, because of course that profile has a huge continuum of need within it. But we're seeing a rise of those students that have intensive needs that are non verbal, that are using assistive devices that are. You know, needing a pretty much one to one support anytime that they're out within an inclusion opportunity. And certainly within the classroom, shared support at the, you know, two to one ratio. So you know, this, these positions are in direct support of that and the BCBA, of course, is going to be shared. Across multiple buildings so that we can also reduce our contractual. You know, contracts for that BCBA support. Without having the ABA par professionals, the behavior regulation and dysregulation of those students would put them at great risk of not only needing to go out of district, but. You know, I I think all of us feel really bad when it gets disruptive to all students and all student learning. And that is part of what does happen if you can't manage and come up with a good plan for the behavior regulation. And the occupational therapist position. The OT not only works with fine motor skills, but the OT also works with sensory integration. Which is a. Specialized lens and view. That's looking at helping students who might have tremendous difficulty with. Integrating the information that they get through the various sensory pathways. And so certainly it could be a kid who has ADHD. It could be a kid who has more of an autism profile. And they really help us devise strategies and actually do explicit instruction with teaching kids how to bring their. Sensory regulation into what would be a green zone if we're talking about the zones of regulation. Where they're ready and able to access learning opportunities. When you don't have that kind of sensory regulation, you're always feeling unsettled and you could either look like you're about to bolt. You know, that fright, flight, fight that, you know, people talk about. The OT can really be helpful. The OT can really be helpful with that. So again, that position is not only supportive of kids who are learning fine motor skills, such as handwriting, graphic motor skills. But they're also incredibly helpful for that sensory integration profile, which crosses, you know, many student learners. So again, I think that that definitely supports both success in school, but certainly for some kids is supporting them to be able to regulate their behavior. And what I do know is what typically sends a kid towards, you know, a level of concern is if their behavior regulation isn't good, if they're unsafe and/or they are unsafe for others. People need to take that very seriously and look at it very quickly and come up with a good game plan. So they're critically important.
So Kathy, just we'll summarize it like in terms of your best guess, right? I mean, how many students potentially would we see that, you know, could, could go out, be outplaced because we wouldn't have the opportunities to keep them in with these teachers and programs, four to five?
Yeah. If we didn't get the ABA paraprofessionals, I would say probably four to five students would go out. If we don't get the BCBA, quite honestly, it's on the IP's. I would just be increasing the contractual service line. Paying the money differently.
That, I mean, that's to Mark's point in question really was, I mean, if you're talking, if, if four or five students have to be outplaced, say the Carroll School, I don't, whatever.
Well, I didn't even address the language base. If that doesn't happen, that would probably be two or three.
So it's a significant mark.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I think, I think what I'm taking from this, and obviously there's those two things, what's best for kids? And we start there. We, we know, and I think this committee in this district done a really good job of trying to keep kids in district because it's the best thing for them, period. Number one. But number two, to the extent we're talking about our budget dialogue now, these are also if we're spending $350,000 on these positions, we're probably saving money by spending that money in terms of not using contracted service providers and avoiding students with the sort of second best alternative of some of the district placements.
Absolutely. And while I still have an out-of-district number that, you know, I'd like to reduce, the fact is, I think the current out-of-district number that we do have really represents the success of the district programs that we have been able to build and keep students in the district. And it's not only a benefit for those students, it's really a benefit for all students. Students that are those typical learners are really having that opportunity to not only celebrate diversity, but develop empathy and to start to understand the gifts that they're given in contrast to the gifts that are given to others. And so I think that it becomes a real win for the typical learner to be able to sit next to and be familiar with and make friends with those students who have unique profiles. So that they grow up to be those empathetic, understanding celebratory adults who can embrace diversity across many types of, you know, profiles of people.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy.
Anything further there or?
Anybody have any other questions for Kathy? Thank you, Kathy. And Mark, I was really, you know, thinking of it along the same lines as you and framing it in terms of number one, it's about doing right by kids. I mean, that's always first and foremost. Secondly, from a budget perspective, we've learned from adding these programs that we save a lot of money when we can create programs internally and and also we want to keep our kids in our community and there's benefit for everybody from that. And then third is, you know, we have legal obligations to, to these kids, you know, they have education plans and if we do want to keep them here, we need to provide the services that they need so that they can be successful. And that happens in, in a, in a document that requires us to, to meet their needs. So, you know, I, I see it that way as well. So, but thank you for bringing these forward and for, you know, always doing your best to have it be done, you know, efficiently and educating us on why these positions are necessary. So we appreciate it. Thank you.
Mike, would you talk about the literacy coach? And if the principals have to chime in, that'd be great after, if they need to.
Now, we have, we have committed to improving our literacy instruction, especially at the elementary level. Within the K five, we have recently adopted, as you know, Lucy Calkins workshop model. And through this model, our teachers have been working with an outside consultant, Claire Landergan. And they've been working closely with Claire. And all of our professional development for this year, as well as for the majority of last year and some of even the year before, has been dedicated to ensuring that our teachers understand these practices and are ready to fully implement the Calkins model. One aspect of being able to really move forward with our literacy instruction is to now bring on a K five literacy coach, someone that will work with our teachers closely, someone that is well-versed in, in Calkins, hopefully. And, and someone that can provide really wonderful modeling for our staff. I envision this person going into classrooms on a regular basis and, and modeling for teachers, appropriate techniques and, and new techniques. And then strategizing with the teachers, how they can incorporate some of these new techniques in their classroom. And working closely with the principals to ensure that our, all of our instructors are using consistent language, are using consistent instructional strategies from K to five. This is also something that was highly recommended by our consultant when we, when we went and decided to move forward with Lucy. She, she told us that having a coach to help throughout this process and, and once we get our teachers trained, will really benefit the students a great deal. I also envision this literacy coach working closely with our literacy specialists and to look at data and to be able to design instructional strategies that will help struggling students so they do not end up having to go and get additional services from Ms. Silva and, and her staff. So we can do a better job at early intervention and intervening where where students need it the most specifically at our, our earliest levels. You know, this is really going to be a collaborative position. It's somebody that will work closely with our administration, with myself and, and with especially with our teachers. And it will really help to put a, put a nice jumpstart on, on our new work here with, with Lucy Calkins and especially improve the way we teach literacy across the board. And when I say improve, we're already doing a wonderful job. Our teachers are great, but this is only going to make us that much better. And I'm confident that this will be a, a great addition to our, to our K five programming.
Thank you, Mike. Anybody have any questions for Mike? Okay. Thank you, Jim.
Great. Thank you. And the last position that, that's here is again, it's a position we've talked a lot about for a number of years. And we are in the process of going through a communications audit. And many of the board members will be getting calls and texts and emails soon with regard to this particular process. But, but we've talked a lot about communication strategies and how we communicate with the, with the Ashland community, not only of the Ashland Public School community, but the greater community, looking at our websites, looking at the, the surveys that go out. As you know, all that stuff is actually our responsibility from principals to myself and Mike and, and all our directors and and having an individual help with that and assist who is part of and skilled in the communication field would be beneficial to our, our district. The hope is, and the way it's written is a grant specialist, so they're looking for additional, not entitlement grants, like our Title I monies that come in. We have people who manage that within our, our schools. We're looking for someone that could help. Actually, if you remember, eight, 10 years ago, we had a grant writer in the district and what they did was they, they wrote grants that helped pay for their salary. So in the end, however, we can work through this, the intent and the hope would be that they're writing grants that cover their salary moving forward as well as have the skill set with regards to communication. And, and, you know, go from there. But it's, I'll be interested to see how the audit shakes out and if that's actually a recommendation or if they're looking at our communication strategies as exemplary. Questions on that? Or comments? Okay. So those are the positions. So let's go back. So I think what's important, again, I, I just want to give you a frame of reference of, of all the numbers and what's happening. As you can see, you know, when we're looking at over a four-year window, three-year actual and, and in a, you know, budget, this number, I forget what the final FY21 original, I think it was 2% that came out of last summer in COVID and we didn't have a budget at the state level yet. But it got adjusted at town meeting, ended up being a 4.68% increase. Again, we're looking for 378. And where does that really fall? It falls within our salary lines, right? So the majority of our costs of our school system happen to be salaries. And that's not atypical of any other school district. It's in the eight, high 80% range. And the contracted services, that goes back to what, you know, Kathy was mentioning with regard to special education. This is where we'd have costs for out-of-district, et cetera. Chris, would you just reflect upon the supply lines and the other expenses as you did at our last meeting?
Sure. For the, sorry, am I? Yep. I mean, the supply line and other expenses are relatively, you know, we didn't, we didn't make, looks like they went down from the fiscal 21 budget. So essentially the reason you're seeing the decrease in the, the supply line is simply reallocation of what we did in the fiscal 21 budget. If you remember at the town meeting, when was it in December, I think, the December town meeting, we, we received, and this is off the top of my head, $780,000, I think. We took that 780,000 and broken into various categories of which 250,000 went into supplies and it was directly related to COVID supplies. We then had to, you know, reassess what we're doing with that. And then you see these, you know, these, these COLs and these other increases that are, that are materializing in the other lines. So it's essentially a, a real, real allocation of what we did with our fiscal 21 funds from town meeting. That, that, that's essentially it. That doing enough, enough explanation?
Anybody have questions on that for Chris?
I just want to ask one general question about, or look at the budgets compared to this year. I assume that the funds that came in through, I guess it was the CARES Act for COVID mitigation and costs. And, you know, I know we spent over a million dollars, million and a half dollars of that. I assume that's outside of the FY21 budget. Right? Because it didn't come through town meeting. I just want to make sure that's, that's correct.
That is correct. Those, those are part of our entitlement grants, Mark. They flow through, a couple of them flow directly through Title I in terms of the amounts that we receive. The CARES money that was allocated from the town, they received a pot of money. It was about a million dollars. They allocated 700,000 to the, to the schools, which again, has helped pay for lots of things, whether it's PPE equipment, some added staff that we needed for the year, those helped pay for salaries, the tents, all of the supplies and, you know, areas that we needed for cleaning, Chromebooks. Those are all, they'll fall within that outside of our budget that we wouldn't normally be able to afford. No, I know. I was gonna say, and, and what we're, we're anticipating, we don't know. And, and someone asked me recently, well, what's going to happen with the next federal stimulus? And until, as you all know, I, I don't like to budget anything until I know we have it, right? So, you know, there's talk of there being a significant influx to our educational community from the state and then redistributed to towns. But we don't know what that looks like. You know, they're sitting in the process of the next 10 hours reading the entire budget proposal. So, but.
So I guess, and that leads to my next question, which is, there's an earlier slide of $60,000 figure that looked like equipment and you made reference to COVID in the fall.
Yeah.
Because, you know, we're really, obviously we're talking about budget for the next school year. Are you comfortable with what we've got here as a budget? If we, we need to incur and cover costs that are COVID-related at part because things fall apart from Washington or at the state level, we don't have additional capital.
The answer is yes, because again, what I would tell you is I'm, you know, Chris, Mike and I have had conversations. I'm pretty conservative with our approach with those funds, partly, you know, outside of this is we're going to be creating a very robust summer academy for students who've been out of school for almost a year in terms of the March to end of June and, and looking to find ways to close those gaps that clearly are happening because of remote learning model, the hybrid model, et cetera. So we've, we have funds set aside outside of our operating budget that came in through the, the federal government, the ESSER funds. And so I feel comfortable if we had to reallocate some of those, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, that we would have that funding to do that. It might impact some of the other, you know, very proactive things we're doing from a student learning and to, to close gaps. But I don't think it would materially do that. So the other piece you'll notice here is our revolving, right? So that, that to us, those are fee, I don't call it revenue, those are, that's what they would call it, school choice revenue, bus transportation fees that would come into the district and we're looking to spend the same amount of funding that we have in the previous year. There's a risk that we're continually spending it down. And that eventually it's sort of like the stabilization fund, if you will, at the town level. If we're spending that stabilization fund down, it's, those are one-time funds and they're, they're gone until you find a way to replenish it. As you know, with, with school choice and we, we've sort of pumped the brakes a little bit as a district because our numbers have been growing. And notwithstanding a COVID year like this year where you see a, you know, a decrease in students, we still have a lot of people and even Kelly emailed me today. We have a lot of folks who are looking to come into our district because it is a high-performing district. But we also have, we've had hundreds of thousands of dollars in the years past where we've received foreign eight, foreign students coming into our, our district. We're not, this is the second, next year will be the second year in a row where we're not actually allowing for that. And so that, that's a significant hit that's going to be on our, on our budget. This is the, what I was referring to. You know, we're down about 90 students from last year. And when we look across the, the board and the numbers, I would say Dave would not say that at the middle school. His numbers continually seem to grow. Aaron Palini, who's on here, I don't know how many more students we've, we've had in the past two weeks, but this is quite often when we start getting students enrolling for next year, but also transitioning to the Ashland Public Schools. It's pretty significant. I think it'll be interesting to see where this 90 because of COVID. We certainly had an increase in the number of homeschool students, which comes off from our overall enrollment. We've had a lot of parents at the kindergarten level say they did not feel comfortable sending and signing up for kindergarten this year. And while we have, I think, you know, 200 Pete, is that right? Right around there, kindergarten students for this year. We could expect to 10 to 220 in a, in a typical year.
Yes, we, we are 200 even right now, actually 201, sorry.
Someone enrolled. Right? So, so that's where we are. And, and to my greater point about chapter 70 and how it is impacted at the state level with regard to enrollment. Our number increased, right? Over, over time. These numbers make a difference in the amount of allocated state aid we get. Now, our number went down, but you know, from a whole But, you know, from a whole harmless standpoint, they didn't dock us. You know, in terms of the overall dollars are, so that's important to understand. They're not going to decrease the amount we received. But it's a, it's a very slight increase. So. Questions on enrollment? I mean, it is what it is. There's not really much to, to look at there. Out of district, Kathy mentioned this, you'll notice, you know, that we have the same, we're anticipating the same amount of students at the same amount of, you know, within $200 difference. And that's really more of a, you know, an adjustment just to, to make the lines, the overall budget numbers work out. So the reason why the numbers are the same, there are a couple of reasons. I think Kathy can chime in here too. With, with COVID this year, we had anticipated a few students that might actually be outplaced in this number. Those students more than likely will, so, so this year's number will not be as high as we anticipated as we get through FY twenty one. But we fully anticipate. And again, Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong, we fully anticipate those students that we had budgeted for and planned on to actually end up being outplaced. So we have to account for it. And even, you know, this week, we had a conversation of another student that would be added to this list. So the way we look at it is we try to identify the students, what would the true cost be? We do not build in additional students that just in case scenarios. But this is where we felt comfortable staying status quo. But like I said, even this week, you know, or last week Kathy texted me and said, we may have another one we've got to worry about. So. But that happens, right? And, and, and I want to emphasize for the community standpoint, if we enter into a season, a school year where our out of district costs, you know, increased dramatically where we didn't anticipate, and that has happened in the past once. You know, we, we try to work within our budget that's allocated to us. But we do have a stabilization fund, a special ed stabilization fund we set up years ago to assist when and if our out of district costs are unanticipated and are increased dramatically. And then we have to go before town meeting in order to get those funds to help pay off those the debt incurred by those, you know, those students being outplaced. But we feel comfortable that this is the right amount at this. You know, at this date.
Jim, Jim, we've only ever allocated funds from there once, right?
One time. Yep. One time. And it's still maxed out. It's got 600,000 in there. And we have, we have been, when we set that fund up, I think it's important to note, when we set the fund up, we made a commitment as a school department to not use that as a budgeting tool for us. It's there should we need it. But we've always tried to work within the framework of our budget is what it is. And we allocate for our students that, that potentially need to be outplaced. This number, if we didn't have the specialized programs, I'm telling you, millions and millions of savings to the town of Ashland. And because of the programs we've built, I did an analysis a year ago and I don't remember exactly what it was, but it was well over 10 million, even factoring in things like reimbursement from the circuit breaker. This here is just another breakdown. You know, one of the things we talk a lot about is, is there equity in school buildings? And are we, you know, where are we spending our dollars in terms of the, the buildings? And, you know, as you, you look at the high school, we obviously have more, we have more students, more teachers overall, but from a, you know, there are four grades, three and the others. Our special education, Kathy doesn't want me to show this, but you know, it's about 34% of our, of our overall budget, 35%. That's inclusive of out of district as well as just salaries. We break them out across the board. And here's what I was talking about with our reliance on revolving funds. As we get into our, you'll notice our anticipated revenues will not equal our anticipated expenditures. Therefore, there's going to be a decrease in the amount of revolving funds we have for the future. And that, you know, that is typical. We've been fortunate that, you know, we've been able to, you know, our school choice number has been right around the million dollar mark for the last few years. But as you can see, even next year, you know, we're anticipating taking 100, extra $100,000 out of the revolving account to help offset a budget. So to get to the 378, we've actually got to use our revolving accounts of 2.1 million to do that. Questions on this? I'm, I'm sure you, you know why our anticipated revenues for building rentals down. COVID, right? And, you know, we're not renting out our buildings right now. I mean, we, I think we've had only a few rentals that we've started to open it up a little bit. So seeing no questions there, we've already been through the, the personnel requests. So I'll stop sharing this unless you want me to, and then go back to the big screen. Any questions on, on where we are from an overall budget standpoint? And for frame of reference for the community, we have budget workshops as a school committee with our administrators as well, where we're have a lot of these conversations. So it's not as though it's new to the, the school committee in terms of some of the things we're presenting.
We have the opportunity to ask all of our questions to the administrators and get justification for why what you're seeing is what you're seeing.
I guess the one other question, and I know you've got something in slide deck on it. And I'm not asking you to put that up necessarily, but every year we do ask, sort of what are the things we're not doing?
Yeah.
And wonder maybe you could just 30,000 foot, you know, sort of, what are the things that if you add another $200,000, $300,000 that you'd be looking at? And it would be tied to that number, but what are the other priorities that, that really aren't addressed in this budget?
I think. Yeah, I've got Dave on here, right? I mean, if you gave me 1.5 million dollars, that'd be better. But as we look at our, our numbers, the growth of our numbers in our middle school and the model, the teaming model that we have, our class sizes are really large here. And, and we've been talking a lot about how do we reduce those class sizes? You know, the middle, middle school and the middle school teachers and Dave and they've really performed so well. But having 30, 31 kids in a class comes at a toll as well. And it would be better suited. The one thing I've had a conversation with teachers this year is they love the fact, right, that hey, I only got 15 kids in the classroom right now. If it's, you know, the hybrid model where a cohort's in, better connections with kids, they're, they're able to, you know, spend more time with individual students. So I, I certainly think more staffing at the middle school would be appropriate. I think the continued effort of our technology, making sure that we have funding set aside as we roll through grade level after grade level, year after year of Chromebooks, we're going to need to continually replace those and, and with a limited budget at the town level for capital improvements. We've got to be cognizant of that. I certainly think another literacy specialist specifically, so you have one at the Warren School and one at the Mendez School. Those are positions that are, that are needed. And, and always we've, we've talked about, you know, what types of electives are we offering at the high school? And to make it a more comprehensive high school. So those are things that I, John Murray, if he was on here and Chris is more custodial staff for sure, right? We've got big buildings and certainly, you know, the emphasis on cleanliness and disinfection and the more staff we have, the, the better it would be for sure. More than 200,000, Mark, I'm sorry.
Any other questions for Jim?
I mean, we are a lean, we are a lean machine when it comes to, I didn't share it in here, but I'll, I'll share the number. We spend about $13,600 per pupil in the town of Ashland in our budget. The state average, mind you, was 16.5. And locally, there's only one other town that's out of, you know, 24 schools that's below us and that's Holliston and they're within $70. And we rank 281st out of 322 school districts per pupil expenditures. Meaning we're one of the districts to spend the least per pupil across the Commonwealth. But yet, when you go look at our, our success and our accountability, we are one of the top performing, top 50 districts in performance. So I'm really proud of that in our team.
For sure. That's year after year, that's an impressive statistic. We should be very proud of that. Thanks to, to all of you. Jim, if you, if you're done with your part of the presentation, I'm, I'm going to open it up to public questions if there are any. Are you ready for that?
Sure.
So this is our public hearing on the budget. So there is an opportunity for any members of the public. I see Ryan's got his hand raised. And if there's anybody else here who would like to ask a question about the budget, please just raise your hand and I will give you your opportunity. So we'll start with you, Ryan.
Thanks, Lori. Ryan Turncliff, Tony Allen, Rossi Lane. I'm also a member of the Finance Committee. So I, I thought I was only going to wear one hat tonight, which was Finance Committee, but I do have a parent related question. I don't know if you care which comes first.
Your choice.
All right. Let me, let me go through some of the both parent and finance type questions. Jimmy talked about the grant administrator, and I think you, you focused your comments on that role, generating enough income to pay for its salary, which I think is important. I, I, I got the sense, but I don't think it was correct that the grants, the grants that that person would be looking for were only for that position to serve their, their function as a communications director. And I wonder if you might just elaborate on any other expense.
Yeah. That role. Now, good point. And I, I, I should have clarified that. It would be a, a role looking for grants to benefit the entire district. Not just to support that role, but within typically within grant funding organizations, you can allocate some of that fund, those funds to pay for salaries of the person who is actually, you know, running the grant. So it'd be working with our principals, Mike, Jen Cutler, Director of Social and Emotional Learning, to identify grants, they would be the ones writing those grant applications. But thank you for clarifying. Yeah.
Yeah.
I think in the past too, Jim, wasn't that person sort of like a liaison too with the AFI?
Yeah, with the AFI, right.
And help manage some of that, Ryan?
Yeah, we have a lot of, when we're in session, we have a lot of grants that are allocated to our, there's grant process for our teachers through AFI that takes a lot of work. And, and typically it's, you know, it's Mike or it's Paul Carpenter, but having someone specifically in that role would be very beneficial as well.
Yeah, no, I, I think it's great. I applaud the, the effort there because I think you'll be able to take in quite a bit more funding. And, and I have heard circumstantially that it does take a lot of effort for teachers to go out and do this on top of their, their heavy workload already. So thanks for that. Next question's on enrollment and outside of the school committee, but on, on Finance Committee and even the Board of Selectmen. We talk a lot about development in town and there have been in the recent two to three years, a number of substantial developments, apartments, condominiums. And I wondered if you've seen the impact. I didn't see in your enrollment numbers, a projection of that impact in the school system. So I wonder if you might comment on that.
Yeah, you know, I wish, I wish I had actually done that exercise momentarily, but I'm trying to grab, I'm at my office. It's good. I have my binder around. When looking at, we typically will break down, so Cirrus apartment complex, right? How many students were anticipated to come from Cirrus? And then how many actually did come in? You know, it, it's, we've been below those estimates for sure. But I think COVID to me this year has played a little trick on us with regard to our enrollment. And I, and I wish I could say that I would be able to accurately identify where they're coming from, where families are coming from and what, what neighborhoods and or if there's new development. But I would say the anticipation is if those 90 kids came back, that we've got probably another two years of expectation of, of a little bit of growth. And then it's going to level off. That's what we've been seeing in terms of our, the NASDAQ, which does our projection enrollment. That's what they were anticipating because they go back and look at the births and the, within the community and, and try to figure that out. Our, our first grade numbers are shocking to me. You know, 180 plus Pete, probably right around there. Which typically, you know, that's a 200 plus range. And, you know, it'd be interesting to see what happens there next year. I, I'm more interested to find out what happens in, in the next couple of months.
Yeah. And also, Jim, recall that the, the projections that the state did as part of, as Mendez also correlated to leveling off in the next few years.
Yeah. Yeah. And that's important. You know, I mean, the, when we did the MSBA project and looked at our numbers, the 635 students for the Mendez Building, right? They actually initially said 620. And we bumped it to 635 and additional five per class based on our, our projections. I, I don't know. I mean, I'm not in the housing market in Ashland, but I still hear people want to get in.
All right. Yeah. Thanks. Thanks for that. Helpful. Is it okay? Two more. They're sort of.
Go on, Ryan.
All right.
This is your.
The special education slide that you had up showed kind of a net of maybe minus a couple hundred dollars. Does that account for the addition of the special education educators that you're bringing in and cost savings associated there?
No, those, the, that number is indicative of what we truly anticipate having to leave our district, no matter what. The, many of these students and Kathy can sign in, many of these students are already in our specialized programs. And, and to, to think that someone might start at the pre K level with Ms. Davidson and make it all the way through to Kelly over that 13 year window. Probably isn't going to happen, right? There's for lots of reasons along the way. So the programs we built, we've done a really good job of keeping the majority of kids in our district. But sometimes developmentally, they move through and we're just not able to to keep those students in.
Okay. Yeah, understood. Thanks. Thanks for that. So I'm going to switch hats a little bit and I, I've, I haven't made this comment in a couple of years. So I'm going to make it again. I applaud the efforts that the, the school committees made to support our special education needs. And I think putting the finance hat back on, there's a lot of economic reasons, but a lot of personal and, and best interests of the student reasons to do those things. I am fortunate not to have children that have special needs. And I, I think what I'll encourage is the last question that Mark asked, is that when, when we're adding staff, if we think we've reached a threshold where we're, we are, we'll never adequately or support, we can always support our students better. I, I, I assume that will always be the case, but I would love to see some elective opportunities come back into the high school or some other, some of those other important roles that, that we don't leave on the cutting room floor without good reason. But, but there, we have a very big student community in Ashland and I would love to see support for all of them across all levels. So future thought, when, when it starts raining money, that we can, we can move in those directions. So that's more of a comment than, than a question. So that's more of a comment than, than a question, but just for consideration. Thanks as always for the transparency on the budget. I don't know that that gets said enough. And it is, you know, just supporting Jim and the school committee members and transparency with other community organizations like Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee and Town Manager, Finance Director. It's really important and I think it's, it's great to have a very open communication and dialogue. So, so thanks for that.
Great. Thanks, Ryan.
Anybody else? Anybody? Okay. So I don't see any other request to speak regarding the budget. So if you have nothing further to add, Jim, I'll ask for a motion to end the budget hearing.
I'm moved. One second.
And then all in favor, Paul? Aaron? Kathy?
Hi.
Mark? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Okay. And thank you for your patience. Barbara, you are up next with the Ashland Residents for Equity in Action. And if you could just tell us more about your group and what you guys are doing and, and then the committee can feel free to ask you some questions afterwards.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Introduce yourself first, please.
Yes. So I'm Barbara Sekesagundu, one of the members for ARIA. I'm here with also Margaret Musoke. So I would just say thank you for having us. At least so you guys can listen to what we, where we are and where we're going. So I'll briefly just read our mission. It kind of summarizes what we've been doing with ARIA. So our mission is a group of people of color and their allies in Ashland, working together to ensure that their voices are represented in local civic organizations, government and the schools. We also support and promote people of color run businesses in Metro West as engines of economic development that benefit the community at large. Through community action, we want to make Ashland a safe and inclusive community for all. So that is our mission and we, we, I, since this is the school, I will let Margaret speak more because she's more in charge of our school subcommittee. Because we have three subcommittees that we prioritize, which we're working on. As you had from our mission, we have the, the civic and government organization. We have the school core committee and we have the business committee. So Margaret, you can speak more on the school.
Hi, Margaret.
Hello. Hi, Laurie and hi, the school committee. Thank you guys for having us on. You can hear me?
Yes.
It's great. Thank you guys for having us on, inviting ARIA, which is Ashland Residents for Equity and Action. Not to repeat what Barbara said, I'll just go right into, you know, we have three subcommittees, but we're focusing on the school committee, our school committee. You know, our school subcommittee for ARIA. And some of the goals we have been working on, we're hoping for diverse hiring. We've been meeting with Mike. And also, thank you, Mike and Kelly, Ashland High and Erin and Corey McIan. Pete and Sarah, we've been working closely with all those folks and try to see what we can, these are only the first steps. So we have been working on some of the issues we've been talking about is diverse hiring. As we know, we were hoping to have, you know, educators that also reflect some of the students that we have. As you know, when you see somebody that looks like you, it kind of motivates you to, it's inspiring for our children to see people that, you know, educators of color. It inspires them to, you know, strive harder and also having diverse educators in our school system will also bring diverse ideas, which is good for the community at large. And so there's some resources that we have suggested. For example, there's multi-state association for bilingual education, MEB, and other resources that hopefully the school committee or Ashland Public School in general could look into to see whether maybe some of those resources can help overcome some of the obstacles that Ashland Public School District is facing in terms of hiring diverse staff. And we are here to help. We are ready. You know, we hit the ground running on some of these efforts. So we're letting you guys know, Ashland Public Schools in general, that we're ready to do whatever we can in collaboration with you guys to help meet some of these goals. And the second one is adding some diverse material to the curriculum. We did do research and came up with an extensive list of books and videos and documentaries that we, we did kind of writing for each grade and we submitted it to the school through Mike to kind of help the school try to beef up or diversify the curriculum. And Kelly say that they have been looking at this and hopefully in the summertime, I guess that's when they go through the curriculum to see how they can kind of add to the curriculum, some of this diverse material that would be so, make our school system education, you know, curriculum so rich for, for children. And some of the work we've done with that is we've been compiling some newsletters and working with Mike, who has been sending them out to our entire school district, you know, some materials, newsletters, you know, like Black History Month, we did send out some newsletters. Some of you might have seen it with some suggestions and, or if you go to our website on ashlandequity.org, we have some of those newsletters there as well. And with, this third thing we'd hope to work with the school committee on is also equal. We see that in Ashland, we have a challenge of equal. Or we need, we're requesting for equal challenging opportunities in, in education, sports and also extracurricular activities for students of color. For example, the AP classes, the placement system, does it need to be tweaked a little bit? Do the parents need more education on, to understand some of these levels? We've seen that at least for, for me and also talking to some parents, some of the system is a little difficult to understand. And those are some of the concerns we've been talking with Mike and the rest of the Ashland Public School staff with. And trying to figure out how, you know, through audits and maybe intervention can we solve some of these problems to make sure that all our kids have equal challenging opportunities, equal playing field for them. And also would request, if we can have a liaison from the school committee to visit us at, you know, one of our meetings to hear in depth some of these issues and concerns and see how we can collaborate together to make the Ashland's education system stronger and diverse and, you know, inclusive for all students. So they all feel comfortable in the schools. Barbara, is there anything else?
No.
Okay.
That's, that's about it.
Yeah. Again, I want to thank you guys for having us on and also I want to thank Mike and Kelly and Erin, Pete and Sarah and Corey McIan for, you know, working with us and having this, you know, this relationship is starting. And just a fun thing we've been working on too is also both principals at the Peterway and Warren, they were, they had a request out for parents to create videos about culture and diversity. And we've been, either parents could volunteer virtually or create a video to share with the teachers. So teachers can have some material to start those conversations at an early, at an early age. And we've been working on some of that, working together with the principals. And also at the Ashland High School, we've been working with Corey to, during the career series, to bring diverse presenters in different career backgrounds to speak to the students. The series I've studied, they studied this much third and we're excited to be a part of it, to be able to speak to these young minds about different career opportunities that are available for them and to show them that there is no glass ceiling. So thank you very much for having us. And if you have any questions, and please feel free to visit our website at ashlandequity.org. And our Twitter handle is, I'm not, at Ashland Equity. Thank you so much. Yeah.
Or can I just ask a quick question?
Please. Thank you, ladies.
You said that you, you are a group of people of color and allies. And I guess I'm looking for, how does somebody become an ally if they want to? Because I'm very interested in what you're doing. So I'd like to be an ally and find out how to do that. And I guess to that point, Lori, I'd be also happy to serve as our liaison if you want to make that a formal thing.
That's a very good question. I know. I was like, maybe.
You have more liaisons than you want.
So to, for, what you can do is to go on our website, ashlandequity.org. And there's, once you get onto the website, there's just a form that you can complete. It's just for us to give you more information. And there's also a space if you, you know, want to just write, add some information there and then one of us, one of the members will get back to you. We'll start by inviting you to our next meeting. So we can see, you can see how the meeting goes and we can start the conversation on. We're just grateful that, you know, this, we have somebody who offered to be.
You may have three, four or five.
Because it's not on our agenda to, to vote on that. We, we might have to do it at our next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. But.
Well, I mean, I mean, Lori, this isn't something that the public is, it's not impactful to the public and you couldn't have known that she was going to ask for that. So I don't, you know, I leave it up to Mark and everybody else.
That we're already talking about, but it sounds like you have several people who are interested. And if it's something that we can take care of now and it's legit, that that works for me. Counsel?
And I'm comfortable with us taking care of it now.
Isn't Mark our counsel?
What's that Kathy?
Is it, aren't you our counsel?
I forgot.
So we've got Erin, we've got Mark and you guys want to talk it out. I mean, I would be happy to do it too, but I'm going to let you guys talk to each other about who might be in a better position to, to do this. That would probably be helpful. When are your meetings?
Our meetings are every, the third, the third Thursday of every month at 7:00 PM.
With our meeting. That's the first problem.
Thursday. Oh.
The third Thursday.
We meet on the third Thursday also. Barbara, we meet on the first and the third. So that would mean unless one of us moved our meeting, that nobody on our committee would ever be able to join you.
You know, I actually have a solution for that because we meet with specifically, I was, that was the general area meeting. But the specific school subcommittee meets on the second Thursday of every month at 6:30. That's when we meet with Mike and Kelly and Erin. So yes, probably that'll be that most appropriate one for you guys to come as.
On the second Thursday. So is that something either one of you could do, Mark or Erin?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I just have to get the calendar, but I don't have any regular conflicts with that.
Thank you.
With that, then I'll let Mark take it because it would be three Thursdays in a row for me of missing bedtime. You win, Mark.
This is default.
I really do want to be involved. So I'll figure out ways to be involved in another way, but. Just so you ladies know, people are not like sparring over who gets to do something. We're trying to, you know.
I would have raised my hand, but I think my wife and kids would probably kill me.
I know.
I'll be in touch with you by through email or through your website in the next couple of days.
Yes. Thank you so much.
Now, do you guys have any students joining you on either your, your major group or your subcommittees or is it just adults?
Yeah. We just recently started trying to get the young populations. We have a group from the high school actually that came in, joined us the last meeting. The Ashland High School Democrats. So it's, they're full of energy. We, we're trying to also, we also got permission that they could get the, what do you call it?
Volunteer hours.
Volunteer hours through coming to help. So since we're a new group, we're still starting to make sure that our website is working out fine. We're all excited. Now we have a Twitter account. So we're going to have them, like they could be helping us in all this computer. Some of us are not that technical. So we're looking forward to working with a group of them. We have, I myself have a teenager. Well, he's calls himself a young adult because he's a second year in college. So we're working with them too. We're trying to make sure, trying to just have a all different levels so they can understand where we're coming from and what we're trying to do for the community together.
That sounds fabulous. We're looking forward to hearing more about what you're doing and then Mark as the liaison. I mean, what typically happens, you're welcome to come anytime yourselves and report back to the committee. But Mark, as your liaison will come back and he'll let us know what your group is up to and how we can help. And we're going to hear from Mike, Kyra in a few minutes about what the district is doing on a district wide level on some of our anti-racist activities and goals. So hopefully we can find a way to weave this all together and work together. Yes, Kathy.
Sorry. Barbara and Margaret, I'm the liaison for the ASHPAC group that we have here. It's the Ashland Special Education Parent Advisory Council. And they wanted me to extend their invitation to you to come to one of their meetings. I believe Diana Davis, she's the vice chair, she had said she sent an email to your group to invite you to come to ASHPAC. But in case you didn't get that or she wanted me, she asked if I would extend that invitation again to you, to you both, to your group. She thought, you know, there could be some collaboration between the two groups or, so she thought it would be worthwhile for you to come to one of theirs. So you could reach out to them. If you go to the Ashland Public Schools, the district website under community, you'll find the ASHPAC. You could, you'll find the link there if you.
Okay.
To their website. And then you could, there's a contact, there's contact information there. But I just wanted you to be aware that they would like you, they would love to have you come to one of their meetings.
Oh, sure. Thank you so much, Kathy.
Follow up on, we'll follow up on that. We had one last question. What are some of the plans, our Ashland School District? You know, what are some of the plans they have for in terms of policies on racial equity, you know, and anti-racist education, you know? What is going on there?
Well, I think we're going to hear a little bit about that anyway from Mike. We did, as a committee, we did make a resolution last year that we, this issue was important to us and that we were going as, as a committee and as a district to support efforts in, in whether it be curriculum. I know hiring has been, has been on our radar for a long time, actually. And even the school committee had it as a goal of Jim's in the past. And, and I think what happened is, you know, he did. And, and I think what happened is, you know, he did all the right things, but we, we ran into some roadblocks, and he can share more about that. Um, I, I think it's one of those things, like, you know, you keep, um, looking in the same places and, and have getting the same solution, which is not what we want. So, we needed, we need to shift where we've been looking. Uh, and I know that Jim's putting some effort into that. So, it's been on our, that is one thing that's been on our radar even years ago. But, uh, it's taken sort of going through the motions and not having it work out the way that we want it to, to understand that we need to maybe take some other steps that we haven't previously taken, and I'll let Jim share a little bit more about that.
No, thank you, Lori. I, I think, I would love to get on one of your agendas, uh, specifically is if one of your goals is about, uh, diverse hiring practices, and, and that has been a goal of ours for a long time, and, and all of, I'd like to explain the efforts that we've taken. Uh, and for me, it'd be great to see, uh, and get a new, uh, vision, if you will, to help us be better at, uh, a diverse hiring practice. Uh, but it certainly is, we've put a lot of time and effort into it, and I wouldn't say it was, has been really fruitful, uh, over, over time. I think when you look back at our total, uh, number of, of faculty members, uh, or employees within the district, we are a more diverse, staff than we were, but minimally, and, uh, we just, I, I certainly could use some advice and guidance, uh, from you as well. So that'd be great. So if I can get on a agenda, let me know through Mike, if you will, uh, and we can talk specifically about that component, because that's really interests me.
All right, could I just add one thing to that? Just Margaret. So, you know, one of the things, um, I'm, I'm interested in hearing what, what Mike is gonna share with us about work that's going on in the district. Um, but I, yeah, I, I don't want to get too far ahead of that. Presentation is maybe something for a later agenda for us, just because I don't think we put it on the, on the agenda for tonight. But I think one of the things that some school districts are doing that we probably should at least have a conversation about it in the future, Nate, is, doing things like racial climate task forces, where you're kind of doing an examination, um, at a district-wide level, of, you know, how, how, how are we doing? I mean, we, we're aiming as a school committee, I think we're unified as administration, unified in what we're aiming towards. But sometimes hard to figure out whether, whether you're being successful or not. And so I think that's something like, so I, I, I had this on my mind to kind of mention after Mike, this, this presentation, but since he asked a question, um, I thought it might be appropriate just to sort of flag that as a, you know, potential, project led by the school committee in conjunction with the administration going forward. And I'll save my sort of detailed comments for after Mike presents, but I think that's something we should be likely talking about soon.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that, Mark, and I think part of it is, we can be doing and trying to, you know, look in different places and recruit. But, you know, I don't know if there's a possibility of even hiring a consultant to really analyze whether we're attractive or inviting, you know, we can be not inviting and not know why, right? And it could be very, something very subtle, um, you know, and, and, and maybe it will not change anything. But, uh, I think that's kind, kind of where you're going as well is, you know, aside from the proactive things we can do with reaching out in these ways, it's also looking internally to say, okay, we've, we've reached out, we contacted, uh, a diverse candidate, right? Somebody, and what is it, sometimes it's gonna be, hey, they want to go back to the, the, their communities that they came from. But other times it might be, you know what, I, I, I didn't get a good, great feeling when I came and visited or something, and, and to have something, have somebody be able to come in and, and look at it from that perspective would be helpful, I think, too. I actually have a question, so, uh, I want to thank you Barbara and Margaret for coming and, uh, for the work you're doing, for sharing it with us. Now, you, you've talked to us about the, the, the school piece. Are there other things you're doing that you are having trouble or want to get more connections? There's a lot of people here that have a lot of other connections with different organizations, or can put you in contact with people, um, outside of just the school realm. And so if, if there's anything, you know, as far as you're, you're trying to reach a, a different type of group or a thing like that, um, and maybe you don't even know a group exists, but are there other things you're trying to do in the community, um, that, that we could help you with?
Thanks, thanks Paul. Um, and to that point, actually, earlier, I liked you, uh, what you talked about, like in terms of assessing why, you know, if we're trying to attract diverse stuff, why aren't we, if we are, why aren't we attracting them, and why, where they stay more, other reasons. So, hiring some, or getting somebody who can actually look into that, find out, because if you identify the problem, then you can start working on it. So, it might be a, a minute thing. So, I, when you guys, some of our meetings, you have some other ideas, maybe, and so we can work together to come up with some of these things. But also we are working on, uh, businesses, as we say, that, uh, you know, kind of, uh, helping and promoting people of color and businesses is also, you know, good overall for our community. So, uh, again, if you, uh, support, we have on our website, we've listed some businesses, we've done the legwork, and also we've been talking to, uh, you know, in touch with, on, with Ashland, uh, Barbara, is it Ashley?
Ashley, yes.
Actually, Ashley plays Beth Reynolds, probably, huh?
They're trying to work with her as well, um, to reach out to, uh, these, uh, small businesses in our town, and, uh, reach out to them, and especially now with COVID, try to let them know this is, these resources are available. So, in that way, we appreciate, and thank you so much for being, to, uh, letting us know about this, so we can always reach out. Businesses is definitely something we're working on, and we've had some success. So if, please support some of the businesses we put in the, on, on our website, and, also if you have any other ideas, uh, please feel free to reach out, we're ready to listen, and we also have our monthly meetings. So if you'd like to get on our agenda to discuss some of the ways that, or other ideas you'd like to help us with in terms of businesses and also civic engagement, uh, please feel free. Yeah, so in terms of the, the other subcommittee we have in the civic and government involvement, the, our community, our Ashland community is, I, I, it's amazing. At first, when we first started, we, you know, it was how we make phone calls, and you don't, don't get calls back, but we've been, right now, I think with more education, as of all, we didn't know some of our stuff, we have a lot of talent, but we're a little bit timid, we weren't sure whether, because we are, are we, if, you know, we have the information, are we able to sit on some boards and, uh, but, uh, people have been so helpful in terms of guiding us and holding our hands to get us involved, and we're very happy to be part of our community and getting involved, so, uh, uh, thank you everybody for that. So, right now, I think some of our, um, area, uh, members are looking for signatures. Uh, Barbara is trying to, yeah, get on Board of Health. Yeah, she's, we're trying to get in some signatures, so this is a new thing for us, uh, a new process, so. Uh, yeah. So that's some way Barbara can, uh, put your information in there, I guess. I don't know how it works, but thank you, Paul.
Yes. So, yeah, so I'm just going to be, you know, I, I'm gonna put out a, a table outside the house, so, like, uh, on, over the weekend, and feel free to stop by and.
Barbara, you have my email, so if you want to email me, uh, some of those details, uh, I'm, I'm happy to share them with my friends, et cetera.
Sure, I will. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, this is a good time to hear from you, Mike, now, about, uh, what's been in the works and what.
So, hold on one second. Before we move on, uh, I would move to nominate Mark Terry to be the liaison to the Ashland residents for Equity in Action.
Well.
Do we have a second? Erin?
Somebody? Second.
I thought Erin's hand go up, so. And Kathy?
Yes.
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Yes, for me as well. Congratulations, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
I look forward to hearing more about, uh.
Look forward to working with you guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming, Barbara and Mark.
For what, to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Mike, you're up.
I'm up. Uh, so I, I want to, um, have you bear with me for a minute while I share my screen here, so I can make sure I, I'm able to share this report that was put together by, um, the consultants who we are working with. And be- before I get into this report, I, uh, to thank, uh, Margaret and Barbara. Uh, I, I've had the privilege of attending their meetings on a monthly basis, and, and they truly have, um, pushed our thinking, and they have also been great partners so far, and we, we were thrilled that they were able to join, um, us one, one time to talk with our consultants as well, to provide some, um, different perspective from the parent perspective, uh, regarding some of the work that we need to do in the community perspective around the work that we need to do to make sure that we are improving with our anti-racist actions and inequity systems here at, at Ashland Public Schools. So, thank them a, a great deal, and I, I'm excited to continue to work with them. Uh, this summer, I contacted, uh, a very good friend, uh, who I've known since 2015, Dr. Chris Taylor, uh, who had told me that she had started a consulting, um, company with, uh, a colleague of hers named Dr. Dez Floyd. And I talked to them about how they could help our school, specifically starting with the high school, to improve our anti-racist practices and to become an anti-racist district. And we, we started by talking about what our school looked like and what we have done previously. Um, and, and we've realized that we have done some things to help promote anti-racism, but not nearly enough, and not anything that could really change thoughts and move us to a place where we consider ourselves a truly anti-racist community. Um, so, they decided to jump on board and work with us. Um, Dr. Floyd, as you can see from this bio here, is the Director of Clinical Learning and Educated Development at the High Meadows Graduate.
Like, you're not, you're not sharing yet.
Yeah, Mike, you're not sharing, I don't know if. Oh, okay, sorry. Huh, hold on. There you go. How's that? Yep, no, there.
There you are.
Yep.
Thank you.
So as you can see, uh, again, Dr. Floyd, just, you know, you can, I'm not gonna read his entire bio, but he is the Director of Clinical Learning and Educated Development at the High Meadows Graduate School of Teaching and Learning. Um, and he has made this his life's work here to assist with communities and assist with folks. Um, because this is a, a major passion of his. As I said, I met Chris, uh, Chris Taylor and I did our work, our doctoral work together at Boston College, we met in 2015. Um, Dr. Taylor is a former classroom teacher, a school principal, and a director of leadership development for a large urban district. Uh, she has worked with Desi, um, and she as well, has, has really made this, um, her passion, and working with schools and working with districts is something that she feels strongly about and knows that she can make a great difference. With their help, we created some goals, uh, and, and the goals here are outlined. To work, to, to develop a shared understanding of what it means to be an anti-racist district, and to work collaboratively to establish a shared language for discussing equity. Uh, another need that we told them we, we, we had is to design, implement, and evaluate, uh, the district's own abilities to be an anti-racist district. And the goal would be to practice and exercise as a team how to design and monitor equity in school systems. And our final need was to engage in both the internal and external work required to do this work well. And that meant we would explore racial identity lenses and the connections to anti-racist awareness and action. Now, what Chris and Dez, uh, are leading us in is directly related to a group of wonderful teachers and, uh, staff members at the high school who have formed, their own Equity Action Committee called CARES, Clockers Against Racism and for Equity and Social Justice. Now, these individuals are Mary, Mary Beth Galant, Corey McGann, Chowin, Jen Shields, Carol Walton, La Chappelle. And this group has met regularly with Dez and Chris to implement the professional learning that's happening at the high school. Now, and they have also led some other efforts that I'll talk about later on. But what Dez and Chris have told us is that it's not up to them as consultants to drive this work. They need to be the folks who are helping our staff members drive the work and own the work. And that's exactly what's happening. They're helping us with the planning aspect of this, and they're helping that team to, uh, put together presentations. But then our group of, of CARES facilitators are facilitating these discussions with the high school staff to truly ensure that we are owning this work and moving the work forward for our district. Uh, the first session was really about asset mapping and beginning to construct the shared vision, getting folks to understand where we wanted to go with this work and, and setting up a framework. One of the, one of the biggest things that they've talked to us about is that we need to understand that we have to make a fundamental change. And to do that, we have to establish shared language and learn how to talk about race and equity. Uh, I'm going to share with you in a little bit, um, a slide present, a piece of a slide presentation that they used for one of the, professional learning days, which really says a lot about the work that we're doing and the work that's being led by the CARES team. And also, it's very important for us to understand student experiences. Uh, we, we, again, we're talking about a group of white staff members led by white administration, that's led by a white district administration. Uh, we, we've got to be able to put ourselves in folks' shoes, and, and it's really not easy to do, and we have to begin to, to try to, to understand what our students are experiencing. Uh, and, and Dez and Chris have been, really been impressed by the work that our staff has done. And we included some comments. They, they wanted to make sure that we shared some comments that were made by the Ashland High staff who participated in these sessions, and you can see them on the screen here. Uh, I, I think, I think one of the best was their second one, "It's a long road to create a more perfectly inclusive space, but it was great to get the conversation going." We understand that this is not going to happen overnight, um, but we are ready to do this work, and our, and our staff members have, have really jumped on and jumped in with both feet, and are willing to do the hard work and have the difficult conversations. There, as you can see, one of the folks actually said that, "We're ready to tackle tough conversations, and it's necessary and good to acknowledge what you don't know and understand." Um, and, and that was, that was really part of session one. Session two, which is to talk about inclusive learning environments and the four lenses of system oppression. Uh, also to discover the why. Chris and, and Dez shared their why, why this work is so important to them, and they encouraged our, our presenters and our facilitators to also talk about our why, and, and why, why we want to do this work, and why this work is important. And, uh, and mainly understanding the difference, uh, between a bystander, an ally, and a co-conspirator. Uh, and, and it's not, it's not enough to just stand by and say you're supporting. It's time to go and shake people's trees, and that's what we're doing here. We're, we're forcing the conversation, and we're telling folks that it is time to understand that we do have things, uh, that we need to be better. And we have to be willing to admit that there are things we don't know and don't do well, uh, as a district and as a school. Some of these comments, I need to continue to educate myself on these topics and to stand up for others. Someone admitted that they had been just a bystander and wanted to be more of an ally. And, and folks were beginning to start to look at their own selves and, 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 and think about their upbringing and their life, and, and talk about things like white privilege to, to begin to view our, ourselves in a different way before we can actually be a part of any type of systemic change. Uh, the most recent, the most recent session, uh, was, was getting us to start to move towards some action steps, uh, reflecting on our equity journey at Ashland High School, and to begin developing a critical consciousness. They also, uh, took us through some history, and took their staff through some history of oppression in America, and then talked about our critical action steps that need to be done, and began reflecting on some data. Looking at our high, looking at our student population, looking at students. Discipline data and to dive deeper into some of that information as well as looking at some of our placement data. Obviously, this was an initial, an initial data dive. But this is work that they're encouraging us to do and helping us to facilitate with the staff. You can see some of the comments made here. Obviously, there needs to be action taken. I I think it was important for our teachers to actually admit I'm pretty ignorant to the history of the United States. I didn't pay enough attention in history class. But that may not even be the case necessarily. Maybe that our teachers weren't taught the right thing when we were, when we were. Children and weren't taught everything that needs to be taught and we need to make sure that we're not making that same mistake twice. And that we are making changes to our curriculum to ensure that that, that we don't repeat that for our own students. Also, why are so few minority students enrolled in advanced D L A classes and what do we need to do about that? These are the questions we need to ask ourselves. Through this work, they've made some. Initial recommendations for us. And again, when I, when I spoke with Chris and Dez the other day. They said that. This, they're very proud of the work that's happened so far and they're in, they're excited to continue. They're going to be working out with our staff again on March nineteenth and then for another session in May. And they know this is ongoing work and they they treating this really formatively as as they continue to go, but here are some recommendations. We need to engage and embed data analysis as a continuous practice to inform ongoing work and to track goals and benchmarks related to equity initiatives. You you folks up the possibility of doing an equity audit or or really looking at some of the. Hiring practices in our student data. They would agree. It's time for us to do those things. We have to continue to build critical consciousness personally and collectively to support, leverage and empower students. I had a conversation with them within a little bit more detail of. What we do next. Once we're done with the work this year. How do we make sure we're dovetailing that into work with our entire district? And they were really proud to say that they think that our CARES team. Has been so dedicated and has developed such great skills that. They're going to be able to push this for our entire district and help to lead some work at the middle school and at the. Elementary schools and also Chris and Dez talked about the importance of having the administrative team meet together to talk about. Our desires and our goals and how we can make sure that we are truly leading this district in an anti racist way. This next one was was interesting. Build an equity library or house and store the materials, data and resources. That are easily available to staff. This will be a grow, advance and execute anti racist practices. Anti racist leaders can identify and address the many forms of systemic and structural racism that exists within institutions. Essentially, what they were telling us is that we need to take all of the. Work that we've done this year and we need to make sure that we're housing it somewhere where it's easily accessible anytime we hire someone new. And we can simply say to them, here's who we are. This is what we're doing. This is the work that's important to us. If you're going to be part of our organization, you need to take a look at this. Similar to how we would do with our new folks who are getting responsive classroom trained. We would, we would make that part of their first two days. We need to make sure we have an equity library of resources and materials together. To ensure that anyone who joins our staff understands that this work is important and this is who we are. And then finally, identify local policies, practices and blind spots that create inequity or are discriminatory. They, they encouraged me to. Highlight that word blind spots because we have them and part of this work that they've done with us is to get us to admit. And to see and to uncover the hard realities that we actually do have blind spots as a district and as schools. And we have to be willing to admit that and then find out what they are to ensure that we don't continue the same practices that we've done. I'm not going to read the summary, but what I do want to do is 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 share with you. A. Couple slides from one of the recent presentations. That they had done. And there are three slides here in a row that sort of show some of the best work. First is this language, building upon the shared equity canon and padlet. And this is the shared language that they wanted to make sure that all of our staff members are familiar with. Being able to define what it means to be anti racist, to understand the differences between an ally, a racial ally. A bystander, to understand what colorblind racism is and systemic and structural racism is. And to be able to make this a regular part of our. Our vocabulary into, so we can, so we can better teach our students. About the systemic racism that that exists and to help them become. Co conspirators and and allies rather than bystanders. And this is the equity journey. I thought this was a great, a great slide to share. This shows where we've gone. From establishing a shared vision to critical consciousness to action. And ultimately, that's the point, right? To 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 go into action. And you can see the step by step process that they've brought us through. From from building that community and norm setting to now being able to explore socio political, economic and psychological effects of racism. And the inequities that exist within, within our society and ultimately even within our schools. And finally. The real point of this whole thing is to go from awareness to action. Are we aware of things? Do we have a general knowledge base? That's great. But what are you doing with that? Are you taking it step by step and following this arrow and moving from awareness to understanding? To creating the skills and having the skills and abilities to. Become a truly culture responsive institution for learning. And to be able to take on these challenges and make fundamental change. And they are helping us to, to, to get there. Again, I I'm so proud of the work that our high school team is doing. I'm so proud of Kelly and Erin's team. They have taken on this work full steam ahead. And to acknowledge some of the other things that they have done. So this, this summer. A group of the, the high school did a book group on white fragility. And it's, it's, it's almost a joke to say, oh, great, a bunch of white people are doing a, a book group. To, to make themselves feel better. That's not what this was about. This was about a folks getting together and saying, we are committed to this work and we are going to. Make sure that we are trying to make some systemic changes and they took their knowledge. That they learned this summer, talked to our consultants and 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 were able to grow that and share with a district wide book group to lead. They did a, a movie. Showing of of black Klansmen and then did a, a talk and a discussion to get the, the conversation started district wide. And they're currently leading another group. And reading the book, How to Be Anti Racist by Ibram X Kendi. So we, we do have folks that are really committed to this. This is work that we're going to continue. We know that there's much work to be done and that we have to continue to grow and everything we do. But so far, it's been a successful relationship with Dr. Taylor and. And Dr. Floyd. We look forward to working with them and I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have. But I also want to, want to, you know, acknowledge the, the great work of Kelly and her staff and and make sure that folks understand that. This has really been tremendous that we've seen this growth so far, but we acknowledge there is much to be done.
So Mike.
I will open it up for questions or comments.
Yes, so, so Mike, maybe two comments or questions. One, there was a, one of the bullets. Recommendations was about that library of the work and 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 things like that. And you mentioned. How it's available to people that we hire or come into the district, right? But how do we also develop? A methodology or toolset for interviewing to ensure that we're. Getting people and and identifying people in the interview process. That are compatible with where we want to be. Because I think that's also important. We, we can get them in there and then if the person just, you know, there's some people that are not going to be able to. Do the work, right? So do they have anything around that and dovetailing that into our hiring practices?
They, they haven't said anything specifically, Paul, but in, you know, in, in general conversations with, with Dr. Taylor. You know, we, we speak about making sure that you are asking people about. About their experiences and in their knowledge of culturally responsive education and practices and in simply seeing. How people answer those questions. You know, I, I also think that we need to utilize. The expertise of of Barbara and Margaret who've been willing to say in that group, the area group who have said. They can help us to find some individuals that we can expand who we're interviewing. And how we're getting there, but I can certainly bring that question to them, Paul, to say, do you have any specific. Interview techniques or strategies that would help us to ensure we're finding folks that match what we want in terms of. You know, being anti racist educators.
Yeah, and and sometimes, you know, it's one thing to ask a very direct question because somebody might already have a polished answer to it. But maybe they have more subtle ways to really identify whether there's something there or not. The, the other thing is. As, as you do this work and right now, I, I'm in my mind and and I, this is part of the question is. I'm correlating some of the structure and how this starts and how it hopefully. You know, blends itself in to be very similar to our S T L conversations, right? Where you start by saying, hey, I got to do this work and it, it's, it's like a bolt on to a curriculum at some point. But it really needs to be, you know, embedded into everything and so. I, I assume this is similar in that we're, we're, we're building some, some, doing some work and building some. Structure and then it will look to see how that integrates and so it won't be, oh, I'm doing. This now. It, it will be ingrained and and a toolset we're using all the time.
Yeah, and and I think that, and Kelly, please step in if you, if you want to add here, but I think that's one of the reasons that the high school. Has been successful so far is I think they're understanding that this is, this is going to, got to be. A feeling and and who we are and not just a one off. And that's also why we've committed basically every professional development opportunity this year to this work at, at, at the high school. And this is not about just adding things to a curriculum or ensuring that we're reading one book or saying that we're going to celebrate. One month of the year where is Black History Month. Th- this means we need to be come a district and. Right now, we're, we're. Focusing on a school. That says we do this all the time and we believe in this and this is who we are. And it encompasses the, the entire, entire being of a building in, in, in a population of students and staff and that's the goal.
I will add a couple of things, if you don't mind. I think. It's important to note our CARES team includes students as well and so they're really helping to drive. The, the work that we're doing as the school community. Some of it has been to. Start that equity library. We have a lot of resources that we are housing in one place that we hope to be able to share out. With our staff and the whole district. And the kids are really helping, you know, some of that language we talked about. I know some people saw on Twitter that rainbow. Poster a couple of weeks ago, people had commented on. Those are going up around the building where, you know, we're doing a lot of things to just change even the appearance of the building that we think will help with education around some of these topics. And we're in the process of redesigning what we're doing with our peer leader. Program to incorporate this work and hopefully has some teachers that'll get some training this summer so that it's part of. The instruction that our freshmen and sophomores get in their wellness classes.
Thank you, Kelly. Excellent.
Yeah, I mean, first, thank you to everybody who's been involved in the work for the work you're doing. Sorry, not an easy issue dealing with and, and that some people seem genuinely engaged in this great year. One, one sort of logistical thought that I had, I was sort of in line with the comment Paul made about. How this ties to hiring. Is I don't know whether the, any of the information that is being assembled in the library. Is appropriate for including on our website, right? I mean, there's a way that, it's one way we can be showing. Our commitment to this work. Is that you put it out there for the world to see so that when. People are looking to say, hey, would I like to, to work in Ashland if I see a posting as opposed to some other district? Maybe that becomes something that, that helps to present the culture that we're trying to build. And so I don't know, I don't know if it's appropriate for that content there, but I guess the, the broader comment is, you know, how, how can we use the work that we're doing? And identify that and share that with potential candidates. You know, in a way that's going to make Ashland more attractive.
No, yeah, I just want to jump in there, Mark. I think it's a wonderful idea and I think within our. Profiles that we, we create with, within our hiring practices, right? I mean, we, we have our school profiles. We can have our hiring profile. This is who we are and this is what we're looking for. And you make a, you make the statement, right? That this is what we believe in and these are the candidates that we are looking for who have those qualities. So it absolutely can be something that we can. You know, bring into the, the mix.
The, the, thank you, Jim. The other thing I guess I want to go back to is the comment I had made in response to Margaret's point earlier. And, you know, to. And there are a number of districts that have, somebody started this process a little differently, like they start with. Some sort of, of task force. And then that tends to lead to work with a consultant and and in part gets to what you're doing already, which is great. The piece that I guess I'm. Processing through is, you know, this work is, is. Work of a school district, it's work of a staff of students, but it's also work of a community. And, you know, I think this community, at least as a. White male, I, I see it as being one that is hopefully. Pretty inclusive compared to what I see elsewhere, but you know, I'm guilty of looking through my own lens. And so I'm, I'm curious if in your work thus far and your discussions. You've had the conversation about how to engage the community in this work as well.
So I would not say specifically I have been involved except for the fact that we have. Been working with our, our area group regularly. Kelly, I think, has participated in that work though.
Well, I was just going to say in terms of engaging the community, we've, you know, had conversations with area in terms of the. The career things and we've had conversations about the. The courageous conversations that we've had in the past through decisions and we've had a discussion about how do we. Bring something like that back. Around the issue or around the topic of anti racism. Hopefully sometime before the end of the school year if we can do it in a sufficiently distant way. So that would be a kind of our first step that we've talked about of engaging the community.
I mean, I think to me that's, I, I don't know what the answer to that is and I don't know that. I'm not sure what our place is in that discussion, but I think it's something that we probably. Give some thought to and and maybe, you know. Be interested to start working with. Area folks and and see if something comes out of that too, that. Is a place where the school committee can be better supporting the work that, that is going on in the schools already. And then the, the, I think the thought that relates to that is. You know, I've, I'm, I'm actually in the process of reading. How to be an anti racist now and, you know, there's a lot of dialogue in that book about. Adopting anti racist policies and practices. And so certainly as I've been reading it, I've been asking myself the question. Where do we as a district stand on that? Where do we as a committee? We have tons of policies. And, you know. We, I don't, I think I've looked at them through the lens of, of being race neutral, but I think appreciating what. An anti racist is and appreciating what we're trying to move towards as a district. Maybe we need to take some sort of different lens at those policies and I don't know if that amounts to. Nothing because we read it and you're like, no, we're in a good place or whether it's a. Anti racist policy of some sort of policy statement. Which Lori, I think you made reference to something we did last summer is we would be in line with that. I don't, I don't know, you know, it's. It's, I think there's something that as a committee we ought to be thinking about and seeing whether. there are other steps that we can be incorporating into the policies that we have where you don't get aligned with what we're really aiming for. Or could be stronger. So I think those are some things that, that the committee will look, look at, but I really don't want to interfere with the work that the administration is doing and seems to really have good momentum around. I mean, that's my takeaway from what you talked about here today, Mike. Is it's good work. And the last thing I want to do is, is get in the way of that by having the school committee start throwing a bunch of different ideas at you that may or may not be good, but will distract you from the progress you're making. So those are kind of my thoughts at this point.
Yeah, and I think, Mark, one of the, on the policy front, I think probably the, you know, unless we find one that is got to be addressed right now, I think the best time would probably be as a certain amount of work is done in this area to look at the policies and see not only are they anti-racist, but do they support that, that work, right? So they're going to develop these things and say, okay, do we need a policy that better supports that work that's been done, right? I think that would be a great time to do that, unless we find something obviously that we don't see now that that needs to be addressed.
Like the collaborations that are, you know, going to continue to be really important. And even to your point earlier, Mike, about and, and many of us have mentioned, and myself included, we're reading the books and we're doing the things, but but there are, you know, there's a lot of unpacking and unraveling and clearing off the layers and getting to the bottom of things and making sure that we have the right people in the conversation. And you're already doing that by going to the, the area meetings and, you know, it'd be great to even identify more places. And it's also tied to any hiring that we might be able to do, but, but we, we don't have that yet. But your point earlier about, you know, we've got sort of the, the white advisors and then the white administrative team and
The white school committee.
Right, here we all are. And then, you know, the reference to the blind spots and, you know, and I only, only speak for myself is that like, how do I, how do they're blind spots because we're blind in some instances, like, and sometimes the intentions aren't good and that's one thing. And other times you can have the best of intentions, but if you don't really fully understand what you're dealing with. And even in your example earlier, I don't know if it was you, Margaret, I think it was you that talked about like the AP class, right? And, you know, you might be thinking on a surface level, okay, AP's available for anybody. You just have to have the grades, whatever, but we until you have the conversations with the people who are having challenges that you might not understand or even there. You know, not understanding how the levels work and maybe not having the right preparation leading up to it or whatever obstacles in the way. And that's just one little example. But probably a million different things. So like getting the right people into the conversation to share those kinds of examples with us. And I'm sure it's not something that you haven't thought. It's just something that I'm thinking about as you present, like, oh, my gosh, like, where, how do I get to the bottom of all these blind spots? And do we have the right people in the conversation to help us do that? And obviously, there's, you know, we're supposed to be educating ourselves, but even still, if we don't know what we don't know, how can we get the, you know, the collaboration that we need to have a full picture of?
Yeah, obviously, my bend on this will always be like, come back to data, just being a data scientist. And so I think it'll be really interesting, Mike, if in the future you could present some more concrete data on what you are finding. And in that vein, I just forwarded to my Jim and all those members. I just happened to be when my dad was getting his shot the other day, listening to WBUR. And it was talking about how young black children are actually doing better in school during COVID because they are not being targeted for disciplinary action the way they were previously, and they are able to focus on just school and take away some of the impact that race plays in the school. And so what would be really interesting, Mike, is grade-wise of our students of color, how they've progressed year over year, and if we're seeing the same thing in town.
Thank you, Aaron.
I'm sorry, Lauren.
No, go ahead.
That day, stuff that we began unpacking here. And so that was really, you know, at the last session, that process began. And now we've got to continue that work. So, you know, I will be happy to share some data once we do unpack it further and once we, we really are able to get into it. But we are, we are beginning that process and that's, we know that we need to do that if we are actually going to make any substantive change. So we are, we are on the right track, I think. But again, work in progress to get there.
Right. It's not going to be an overnight solution to, you know, a problem that's been embedded, you know, institutionally for decades, you know, forever. So it's going to take some time, but you're doing the great work already. So thank you for that. Kathy, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I wanted to say, did anyone, any other school committee members? I joined that webinar last week for Inclusion, Diversity and Equity. MASC had sponsored it and it was Division, Division 10. And they had Dr. Kalise Warnham was the presenter.
Mark, did you?
Yeah, I was on that, too.
That was dynamic, but I just wanted to bring up the point, one, she had many great points, but one of the points she talked about when you're hiring people or you want teachers that are culturally proficient. And when she talks about that, she meant culturally proficient teachers are self-reflective. And they study their student and they, they learn who they are. And they're teachers that have a willingness to have necessary difficult conversations, the ability to have necessary difficult conversations. And those are the types of teachers that you want. So, Mike, I'm just, I'm looking at you like when you're looking to hire. I mean, those are, those are the qualities you're probably, that we probably want in our teachers. So anyway, she, she had, she was a great presenter. She also talked about implicit bias, which I thought was fascinating. Was, was a great topic. Actually, Mike, did, did the group go over stuff like that, implicit bias? And? Yeah.
Yes, that was part of the, the language and the vocabulary, vocabulary that was used to talk about how do we have implicit bias, what it is, what, how it impacts the way we think on a regular basis. So that has definitely been part of it.
She was, she was a really dynamic speaker and she'd actually spoken a very similar presentation at the virtual annual meeting back in November. And there was supposed to be the MASC conference in November that never happened. She spoke in a virtual meeting. And she was incredible. I didn't realize they were going to have the same person, Division 10, but great the second time, too.
And it's nice to be able to share resources and be invited to these others. There was another one that we were on, Mark, with the Framingham has a, is a diversity, I forget his title exactly, but he's or Framingham. But inviting, you know, others into the conversation so that we can find different ways to understand the issues and to be allies and resolving them. So, any other questions or comments before we move on, Paul?
Well, so one of the things Mark mentioned before kind of just made me think that the position Jim and Mike that we talked about adding is around communication and grant writing and all those other things. And so when he talked about putting something up on the website and I think that is a crucial hire for, if they're going to help us with communications and things like that. We need a person with that lens, with that skill set to understand our communication and be able to have conversations and engage with community members. You know, whether it be our friends at Area, with an area or whoever, to make sure that our communication strategies and what we're doing, you know, meets not just what we're doing, but is going to, you know, be in alignment with where we want to be. So I, I think that's got to be a crucial hire for, and have this set of skill sets because they're going to be helping us shape how we're communicating. I think that's
Yeah, that's a great idea. That's a great point.
Lori, I guess the only other comment I'd make is just, I mean, this has been really energizing to me to get this kind of reporting, hear what's going on. So don't keep it a secret. You know, I mean, whether it's, like, is your part of your assistant superintendent's report on a, you know, a weekly, a monthly basis or what have you, or if you want to do a more detailed update like you gave us tonight, on a quarterly basis, or whereas you think appropriate, but I'm interested in hearing you know, as, as updates on a periodic basis on the work that's going on in the district. And if that's coming from you or Kelly or the middle school. Just great to hear. Thank you all.
Excellent. Thank you all, everybody. All right, Jim, COVID.
Yeah, this will not be as exciting or exhilarating and, but it is our, part of our reality right now, right? So first of all, let me just share the, thanks, Ed. Let me share the weekly information with you as we there's a piece over there I want to share after, but so as you can see, once again, we're continuing to see a decline in the number of cases within the town in the public schools. And what you'll notice is I added this little column over here, just as a frame of reference, the seven-day rate, if you go back to the CDC guidelines, which I'm going to share here, does that switch over? Okay? Can you now see?
No.
Okay.
You're still looking at the?
Okay, I gotta go back. Okay. A new share. Right here. So you should, now you see a different chart?
Yeah.
Okay, so when the CDC put out their guidelines, more recent guidelines with regard to communities transmission and whether schools should be back in session. Again, when they're looking at counties, some big counties, and you'll, you'll see in the newspaper, there should be like nine schools across the entire country that should be open. Based on what they're looking at for, for data points. And what I want to stress is that when you do our own local data, which we've done every week, we fall in this low transmission blue category as a community, right? So zero to nine cases over a seven-day window and less than a 5% positivity rate. And, and I think it's important that when we're hearing things at the federal level or the more global level, that we still continue to boil things down locally. And I'm going to go back to here. Because this is, these would be our numbers, that zero to nine, 6.53 is our number. We know our positivity rate this week has dropped to 1.69%. So we are seeing, certainly after that February break, you know, Ed, Audrey and I were holding our breath, that we would see this tremendous increase in, in cases that we saw after the December and January break. We have yet to see that. I'm not saying it won't exist or won't happen. Ed, chime in if you want, but we haven't seen it to this point yet. That being said, we are still in a position where we've got about 50 students quarantined with the majority of those students, you know, being between two, two pockets, 20 are travel and eight were quarantined due to being a close contact for, for youth basketball. And, you know, that's, that's the, the nature of some of our quarantines. I will say that within our class quarantines that we've had to do in the past, we've had zero comeback positive of all those close contacts, which is, is really important. We're starting, I don't know, fall two sports, I guess it is, with games this week with Westwood and Holliston, depending upon volleyball or other sports. As you can see, their numbers across the TVL have also begun to go down significantly. All in all, why we have this conversation Thursday nights or Friday mornings is what is our model for next week? Again, it's, we're not looking to change anything for next week, stay in the hybrid model. And no changes necessary. We're close to the green based on other metrics. But we're still not quite there yet. Questions on this before I get into another?
Jim, just really quick on maybe, maybe it was just how you said it. So the, the seven-day CDC thing, that's still a daily average case, right?
Yes.
You, you said the number of cases in a week and I'm like, oh.
I'm sorry, it's still a daily average, correct?
Right, so it's, it's a daily average.
The daily rate, yeah. Yeah, apologize, yep. So, so that's where we are. With our data, it's really positive data. You know, Ed, you know, chime in here, it's certainly something we're watching. We're only a week out since, a week and a few days since the break. And we noticed that two-week time period would be a you know, a date we should be focusing on.
Yep, holding steady.
So, so then that leads me into a couple conversations as it relates to COVID. Tomorrow, the Commissioner of Education is going to the Board of Directors for the Commonwealth to ask to look at the ability to change structured learning time. Once again, he did this back in December, which impacted us in terms of our streaming at the high school and the middle school. So going live streaming to get in structured learning time hours. His recommendation is now that K-5 come back in full in person by the beginning of April. And my, you know, my gut tells me that's going to happen tomorrow, that there's going to be an affirmative vote to do that. We've certainly have been planning for this. We continue to plan. And, you know, having conversations with, with our Education Association to make sure that when we going to go into this next phase, if you will, that we're all in agreement as to how we should do this. I will say for those who are watching in the community, on Sunday, I will most likely be publishing a document that talks about our new reopening, if you will, the next phase reopening. It will strictly relate to K-5 as that is our most you know, in, you know, most immediate need based on the change in master general law and structured learning time as it goes with the, the Commissioner of Education. There will be a final survey, right? Another survey, but one that is really required of our community to fill out. Because Pete and Claudia, they need to know specifically where and what, how our students are going to learn for the rest of the year. And it impacts everything in terms of what classes look like, the, the need to reallocate teachers. So it will be a binding commitment. We have not asked for that yet. But we need to do that in order to be prepared for April 5th, which is the expected start date for K through five, full-time, back-in-person learning. The state will give us an option. You can be remote learning only or in-person learning only. The hybrid K-5 will no longer exist after the Commissioner's, you know, recommendation.
Just to clarify what you just said, you're talking about not, the district can't be remote only, parents can choose.
Correct. That's correct. Parents can choose to be remote for the remainder of the year or they can choose in-person learning. Homeschool is different, right? But because they're not part of the structured learning time. So, but the hybrid option is off the table. So there, there will no longer be a that option. Kathy?
Just K through five.
Just K through five at this point in time.
So high school, middle school, they're staying in whatever?
They are staying in hybrid. That is correct.
Whatever.
As of, as of now, we're, there will be, there's conversation again at the state level, the logistics. The logistics to pull this off is monumental. You know, Pete and Claudia would tell you the same thing. Uh, it's monumental to bring for in our situation, about 1,200 students backup on the fifth of, of April. And to get our rooms prepared, to create as much physical distancing within the classroom as possible, we need to know how many students are actually going to be attending to get uh, transportation squared away, to ramp up our nutrition services. These are all things to look at our, our student services. You know, in terms of how we're deploying our, our staff to, to meet our needs for our unique learners. There are many moving parts here and you know, we've got a very short window of time to do it. But I'm very confident, you know, we've done this already a couple of times and uh, I met with the staff of Warren and the staff of Mendez for a couple of hours each on, was it Tuesday, Claudia? Uh, yeah, it was Tuesday and obviously there's a little apprehension and a little anxiety. But uh, what we've said is we will work with one another to, to make this as smooth a transition as possible. They want kids back. It's still a, um, it's just nervousness. Uh, it's anxiety. Uh, and um, I think the governors, you know, and the, and the president's comments before about um, vaccinations has sort of relieved some of the pressure, but still getting educators in and faculty and staff in to get those vaccinations uh, over the next month or six weeks is going to be a challenge as well because of limited supply uh, of the vaccine in Massachusetts. So questions on this component before I, I share some of the survey results from the parents, which again, I'll be upfront, some of it is, you know, not relevant anymore uh, to a certain extent, right? The, the K five surveys where we were asking those questions about would you come back? What are the requirements to come back? Well, that part honestly is off the table. K five, if this passes tomorrow at the board of directors.
Tim, there, there are like a lot of questions I have about how things will work. But I don't know that, that you want to get into this now and maybe it's better for us to to see, you know, what you're going to put out to the community. I guess I'll just flag the, the two things that I, I guess seem like they have to happen and it may make sense just to whoever's watching at home kind of thing. I mean, it seems like if depending on how the students choose to align, you know, whether I mean, you're coming back in or going out may mean a change in teacher assignments with kids.
Yep.
And you know, I think that's obviously not desirable, but it seems like it's unavoidable. And the other one is, you know, certainly a concern that was expressed to me by, by friend is for kids who receive special education services on their hybrid days in school, if they choose to go full remote, you know, are they able to get those services in school somehow or, or is that? How does that get addressed? And I, I know it's going to vary with every kid. But um, I guess I maybe just for this purpose, letting people know that there is a plan to do that is, is maybe the best way.
So I, um, as part of our FAQ page that will go out, Kathy, I had her actually answer a question with regard to uh, remote learning or remote services versus in-person services. And basically, uh, one of the lines in there is as a team, we will work with individual situations and families. That's what we do, uh, and we'll figure that out. But it certainly with more students in the building, the allocation of the, the resources that we have within the building may preclude us from, from having that opportunity. It all depends on really the number of students who are in and where our service providers need to be deployed. To your, your other question, everything is going to be dependent upon the number of students who choose in-person learning and remote learning, remote learning. There's, that will drive pretty much everything. The odds of a teacher, um, odds of us having to move students out of one classroom to create another classroom are very high and some families are going to have to make a choice. Because we can't have 30 plus kids because of the way the cohort model worked, right? You could split up large classrooms and only have 15 students in and 15 students in, and now you've got 30 at an elementary level, say at a kindergarten level. That's totally inappropriate uh, in terms of a learning model with, with all students back in. So there will be uh, choices that have to be made. Teachers would tell you and, and the conversations I had and Pete and Claudia would say, it's not ideal. But because of what we need to do in order to pull everyone back into the system who wants to be in the system, it needs to be done. Uh, and what we want to be able to do is give families first and foremost, the opportunity to make that decision for their family. There will be some families who say, I just want my children back in five days. They're resilient. Uh, they're flexible and if they get a new teacher for the remaining 13 weeks of the year, I'm okay with that if they get the opportunity to be in school. Those are the conversations we've been having as a staff. It's not something we're not going to be able to pull all the teachers who are remote learning, remote teachers back into the building and only be with remote kids, right? There's potential of remote kids coming back into the building as well. And, and actually a significant number in some scenarios. And that's going to reduce the number of, of students within the remote learning classroom that to me will require us to actually potentially move those remote learning kids into another section of remote learning because we need the resources to, to move with kids back into the classroom. But none of that can be determined. In the email they sent out, we will lay out as many scenarios as we can for families. We're not going to have all the answers and staff said to me the other day, Jim, we know you don't have all the answers because we don't know how many kids are coming back. We don't know how many kids are leaving uh, to go full remote. So it's, it's a quick turnaround. I, it, it's, um, I, I was sort of talking about this to a couple of teachers with regard to the stages of grief. You know, like I, as soon as a decision is made at the state level, I just go right to acceptance. Cause that's what I have to do. I've accepted the fact that this is occurring. Now my job is to really make it happen with our staff. Claudia and Pete's job is to, to work with their staff to get them through the other stages, right? I think we're past denial. We know it exists. It's going to happen. But, but it's still working through it. They're still as staff really concerned. And we've got to make sure internally we include them within the logistics to make them more, um, you know, comfortable with how we're proceeding. Uh, and Pete and Claudia and their staffs, Todd and Kate will do a phenomenal job with it. But it's a quick turnaround for sure.
So just one, one last question, I guess, is um, we met on Saturday, you talked about the possibility of um, phasing in grades and building, you know, or something like that. If you've had any more thought than that, and certainly to the extent we're talking about April 15th, it's potentially earlier than that. I guess I wanted to make sure you had a chance to put that out there.
Yeah, so we had, we had really good conversations at the faculty level because I, I think it was that to me, it was critically important that, that we have a conversation with each building faculty and staff because really that impacts them. And over the next three weeks, you know, we also have a couple of things happening, right? We have uh, parent teacher conferences. We have uh, i- if we were to ask specific grades to come back really quickly, you know, the preparation of the buildings and facilities, it was actually going to cause more anxiety in our, in talking to teachers by doing that. They actually said, Jim, we prefer, let's take these three weeks, four weeks, get our rooms going, get them set up even, they're asking Claudia to get desks in their rooms now. Get it, get things moving, get things set up. Let us work through because it's, it could potentially change how we teach our curriculum. Give us the time that we need to, you know, work through our emotion and anxiety and we'll be ready on that first day on April 5th. Bring them back on that day. But give us the time to actually work as a team, as a school to develop our protocols after we know how many kids are coming back. So, you know, I, I'm again, I'm taking their feelings and considerations into play. So we're not looking at a phased approach, uh, Mark, after these conversations.
Okay, thanks.
So, so Jim, just uh, want to make sure to be clear on something you said, just to, to make sure this is funny, doesn't take it as the just types of decisions they're going to make. And so just to be clear, even, even staying where you are, right? If I'm, if I'm hybrid and, and the stain would be, hey, I'm going all in person or if I'm going to remote, there's going to be no guarantee that you're going to have continuity with your teacher because of what's going to happen and the decisions are going to need to be made aren't, hey, if you decide this, you're going to get a different teacher. We're not going to be able to give that decision to families, right?
I, I, I would say about what Claudia and Pete correct, probably about 95% of, of the students will, will be able to have their same educators.
Ri- ri- right, right.
Right.
You're going to, you're going to try as hard as you can.
Absolutely.
There's got to be some, some level and, and that's not, uh, there's no guarantees that you, if you are remote, you stay remote, you're going to stay with the same teacher.
That's absolutely correct.
Uh, a- and that the decisions we're going to be asking them to make are the, the, the binary of remote or this not, hey, if you come in, you're not going to have the same teacher or if you do this, we're, we're not going to ha- have the time or luxury to have those uh, those very granular decisions.
Yeah, that's right. And we want to be able to under, let the community understand, we're talking about, we've been in this model of six feet of distance between kids, right? In order for this to work, we actually have to reduce that down to, um, you know, between three and six feet, you know, the conversations we've had as a faculty and staff was, will not go under three feet. Our goal is to maximize whatever distance we can. And even in Claudia's largest classes, it's probably around four feet. And you know, thereabouts. So, but fa- families need to know that that's what it could look like. You could have 26 kids in a classroom, which are separated at four feet of distance. Lunchrooms, they're going to be bigger uh, in terms of the, the overall volume. Bussing, transportation, there will be more than one person on a bus, on a seat in a bus, especially for the elementary levels. That's the only way from a logistical standpoint that we can make this work and, and get our students back in. So, you know, I will hopefully be as clear uh, as we can with scenarios. And within my uh, opening uh, messaging um, document and Pete and Claudia have, I've been working diligently on their logistical things. And those logistical things, we don't always, we will not have all of the answers yet until we determine how many students are actually entering Warren and Mendez. That will really dictate uh, what it looks like.
Jim, have you thought about or what might it be necessary? I don't, I don't even know if it's possible to, to have caps on, you know, how many can come back or how many can go out? Because I, I attended, I know, and I would, I'm, I'm, from my point of view, I'm thinking, you know, parents are going to have the choice and that's the end of it. But I went to a meeting um, last night with other school committee members and I know some districts are considering, you know, because families signed a something saying, you know, my student will be in remote for the rest of the year. They're considering having people stick to that because if everybody were to come back, they, they don't have the space even at the three feet. I mean, we're all dealing with different space issues. So is there a point where we have a problem? If the numbers don't line up the way you're expecting them to?
No, because we, I mean, we have staffing. If all kids came back in, right? All of our staff, we have appropriate staffing. We have areas within the, the building. We counted all these students if it was a full day of school for everybody anyway.
Okay.
Now, it's just, it's logistics that we have to work out in terms of moving people around.
Right.
In order to make it work. And remember, we did not have a, um, a commitment from families.
Right.
So we haven't done that. And, and to be honest, this will be the, the final commitment for the year. This is, we, we're not going to be able to, because when we're looking at setting up classes, we still have to account for kids who move into our district. Right? We still have to have flexibility when families move in. Aaron's enrolling kids all the time. Uh, and those kids typically move our in-class students. So once you make that decision, it'll be, you know, committed for the remainder of the year. But, you know, we'll see. I mean, once, once people get to the point where they actually have to make a commitment, well, it'll be interesting to see what our numbers do look like.
And what are you thinking for timing on that? When are you asking for the commitment?
Uh, for, in a week. I mean, we have a weak turnaround uh, in terms of being able to do this. So, and believe me, we had most of our responses within two days. You know, I anticipate hosting a webinar, uh, Monday and Tuesday evening for Warren and Mendez, one, one night, one night. So we can answer any potential questions that people might have that might impact their decision on uh, being remote or in person. There will be 60% of the folks, more than that, 70% of the folks who have already made up their mind and they will just put their information in. But then there'll be a small percentage that still need to hear what it could look like. And unfortunately, uh, as we said to the teachers, we don't know exactly what it will look like. We can only give you an approximation of what we envision based on the numbers we have. You know, i- it's to say it's, you know, a monumental task to pull off in four weeks is a gross understatement. But we'll do it and we're going to do it. And we've already, you know, started the process. Chris has 200 desk ordered. They'll be here on the 22nd. You know, Claudia wants desk, uh, in, you know, her teachers want their desk in their classrooms now. So they can start organizing it and arranging it. You know, so we've got a lot of moving parts just with that component. In addition to, you know, rolling out uh, pool testing at the high school, for the high school and staff, um, probably a week from Monday.
So, so Jim, um, I guess one of the, one of the challenges is going to be getting the responses, right? So what's the tact or you maybe, maybe you don't know, you're going to take there, is there going to be a defaulting? If you don't respond and you're in hybrid, you're going to be considered this or are we going to be making phone calls?
We're going to be making phone calls. Uh, the way I, we've set up the form uh, is that by teacher. So, so we can then, we can disaggregate the data. Uh, Claudia's so good at this and she knows it's coming her way. So we'll use, you know, Ms. Bennett's classroom, she's got 22 kids. We'll be able to disaggregate the data and see 18 have, have responded. There are these four families that haven't responded. We have to, we're going to do personal outreach to those four families so they make a decision. So that's what we're going to do. That's why it's a, it's a timeframe of a week. So we can have a couple of days to, to ensure that we outreach, um, you know, to those families. Cause as you know.
And, and so, so may, so maybe when in your email, highlight that, listen, don't make us call you, don't, that, you know, as you said, there's already a monumental amount of work, uh, you know, fill out the damn survey.
But yeah, but we, again, we do have a lot of families that are hard to reach. We've talked about this for years. And who need, who have, will have some language concerns, right? And, and, and those will be families that we will have.
I'm not talking about.
I know you're not.
I'm not talking about the ones that have a legitimate reason for it. I'm talking about the lazy people.
Well, right.
Actually get some skin in the game and actually participate.
Fair enough. But yes, that's where we are.
Jim, the converse question to that is that, okay, teachers seem to be excited like I drove by Hoppington yesterday and they were outside picketing like with like hearts and vaccines and stuff. Um, and they seem to be excited, but how, do you have a sense of how many teachers may not come back if they can't get at least one shot?
No. Well, I mean, I'll, I'll show you some data in a minute. That would give us some sort of sense. But, you know, my guess is, uh, you know, we will see the majority of our teachers back. They're, they're professionals and they'll, they're going to do their job. I think their concern is, um, you know, we have over, we have about 20% of our faculty and staff right now who are currently vaccinated and or have uh, appointments to be vaccinated. And, and some of them are the ones who are the most in uh, close proximity to our most vulnerable. in close proximity to our most vulnerable students, too. So so it'd be interesting. I mean, again, a lot of a lot of work's gonna happen over the next, you know.
Where do we stand with the pool testing, Jim? What what's the update on that?
Um, actually, tomorrow Audrey and I are meeting to finalize our process. We've been accepted into the program. So by Concentric Ginkgo, which is the one, for those who actually went up and did the spit, you know, ECR. It's this is not a spit, it'll be a nasal swab, but not a not an Ed Berman deep nasal swab. So it'll be just the anterior, which is where you just, you know, blow your nose and make sure you just swirl around. It's actually, students can do their own. And from second grade up, they can do their own.
It'll be once a week, or?
It's actually, it's once a week, but we're starting at the high school.
Okay.
And our our staff. Partly, we're starting at the high school because, again, our hope is eventually, you know, pool testing was one of the things, high school teachers especially, said, hey, if we can do more testing and get vaccinations, we welcome kids back. We welcome, we want them back. But our young adults, just take the word young out, they're adults, they're more likely to be transmitters with more people than young kids are. The research is really clear there. The the commissioner has drawn his line in the sand right now. He's focused on K five, pulling everybody back into the buildings. That being said, he may may, I don't know if he's going to specifically, but he may put out there a phased-in approach for middle and high school. Right? I'll be clear, to me, my my greatest concern within our district is our middle school. Just because, you know, when Mark asked the question about budgets and about what would I do, we've got many classrooms of thirty in very small spaces. Again, thirty desks at the elementary level or twenty-five desks looks very different than thirty desks at the high school, middle school level. Those desks are about half the size at the elementary level. You know, the students are half the size. So you're talk tap talking about taking up space pretty quickly. But our goal is to get everybody back in. I mean, that's my goal. But we're gonna make sure we do it in an organized and methodical way. And and the governor and the commissioner have have said, we're focusing K five first, which I think is appropriate. So let me see if I can share one more piece of data for you. Let's see. Okay. Share my screen. I know it's getting late, but I I did wanna share this. So if you remember a couple, about a month ago, we we did ask a survey. It was right before the break, February break, about returning to school, had two separate surveys running parallel, one with students and parents, one with faculty members and and faculty staff to to say, hey, you know, what are some things that are required or you would feel more comfortable with coming back more in person? And like I said, th- this was done pre Biden, pre-Governor Baker with vaccines being a priority. So the the survey was done before that. Two, it was pre the vote of the Board of Directors for the Department of Ed, bringing K through five back. Okay, so those are those are important pieces to understand. And before, sorry, before I get into it. So I think it's important to understand, you know, the number of folks who responded. We were really asking, you know, four questions. Are you willing to come in at less than six feet if vaccinated and there's regular testing? Are you willing to come back if you're vaccinated and students are separated at less than six feet? Again, so what it took out was the testing component. Like, didn't that didn't factor into the faculty minds? Or are you willing to come in without anything, without any, you know, just re- just come in, we're ready to go. And under no situation, so this goes to your point about staff members, how many are we fearful of losing or whatever? How many would not come back at less than six feet? Doesn't doesn't matter under no situation. I mean, it's fully vaccinated, you know, sixteen masks on, you know, an astronaut suit, nothing. Thirty-three folks said they would not come back under any of those situations. I think it's important to understand, as we had about almost just about a fifty percent response rate from faculty and staff. Questions on this, it's pretty self-explanatory. I mean, I I think of it this way is, I've got a hundred and, you know, eighty-six who are comfortable coming back at less than six feet of space with a couple, you know, caveats in there.
Yeah, but Jim, I think you have a hundred and fifty-six who really want to be vaccinated before they're coming back.
Sure. Well, they they they're willing with, right, to come back with more vex with vaccination. It's not gonna fully happen. That's the bottom line. But I think where this matters is when you get to the older school, older, excuse me, the older students. So this is the high school response. So trying to minimize all the people on the side here. So fifty-seven percent, again, we have ninety-six total staff. And, you know, again, it does, you're right, it goes back to the vaccination component. It's seventy-five percent, right, seventy-six percent, get us vaccinated. And, you know, we can go back and go for it, less than six feet. Again, the middle school, about seventy-six percent. You're you're gonna see a very, excuse me, you're gonna see a similar staffing response rate, but also percentage of of coming back or under no situation coming back. Mendez faculty and staff, you know, little bit less here, eighteen percent versus the twenty-two you saw the previous. They had a little higher response rate. Again, sixty-five, eighty-two percent or eighty-five percent again, coming back. But you know, it it's sort of, it's one of those things where vaccinations and testing are important of all of it, of all the grades. But in order to roll the pool testing out, you can't just start with every faculty member and every student. You it's gotta be rolled out and, you know, and stood up slowly because there are multiple layers to it. We're asking our staff, our nursing staff, Ed, to do one more thing to make this work. And we're gonna need participation rates to be high to get this done. So a letter will be going out to the high school staff, students, high school students, hopefully by the weekend as well to to get folks signed up because we have to pool them and cohort them and and for the testing purposes. So parent respondents, I think this is very telling, and I put a couple of things in here. Just so you know, we currently have two thousand two hundred and twenty-one in-person students, K through twelve. Sixty-nine percent of them responded. So a little higher rate than than other folks. We have four hundred and sixty-nine students who are remote and about forty-five percent. So when we're asking, you know, making sure we connect with all these folks here when it time to to make a decision. Four hundred and twenty-six Warren students or families, four sixty-three. You can see the percentages were pretty close. You know, with the high school being a little bit greater. So overall, sixty-four percent response rate. Not bad. So Ashland High School and Ashland Middle School parent responses. You know, when I looked through this, I was like, we gave them options, like, what are some things that would matter to you with regard to opening school more fully in full in person? And I was shocked that, you know, look at these two scenarios, sixteen and seventeen percent said, hey, masks don't matter to us. Like, really? I I was shocked. I I mean, to me, I was like, I would have thought that number would be about a hundred percent. That mask, yeah, masks are are important, no matter what distance we're at, six feet, three feet. It matters to us that masks are worn. You know, thirty-eight percent of the the families at the high school said, hey, six feet is what we're comfortable with. Thirty-six percent said said three feet. It's like I was saying to staff the other day, everything in COVID, every decision we make and every discussion we have about a decision, quite often, we're gonna have a consensus. Quite often, we're going to have a very overwhelming decision that for most people fits their narrative. You might get a ten or fifteen percent that say, you know what? I don't like the decision. Here, again, it's like thirty-four percent, thirty-six percent, you know, it's it's there's just no, and then the in-between, the other fifteen or twenty-five percent was all over the map. I would never send my kid back. I'm not sending him back. I don't care what you do, bring them all back. So it was kind of interesting. The the purifiers, I just wanna mention this while we put it in there as as an option. Every classroom has a purifier. We we did that anyway. We've changed our ventilation system to increase to our the highest quality air filters, MERV thirteen. We're using air, opening windows and using fans for air circulation. We're we're doing all the the ventilation stuff many families had asked about. We're doing all the right stuff and more so than even the recommendations. But about fifty percent at the high school families thought, you know, testing's important. So it'd be interesting to see how many participate. We're gonna need seventy to eighty percent testing participants in the testing pool to really validate what's going on within our community in the Ashland High School as well. Again, we found at the elementaries, families are a little more willing, you know, compared to the six feet of distance to bring their kids back in at a minimum of three feet. Again, eighty-seven percent for both, for the mask-wearing at all times. Less, right? Here's the analysis, the testing of 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 students and faculty way less at this level. Didn't feel it is it was as necessary. Partly, I think, because literature is out there that, you know, the older students are more susceptible to contracting COVID, but also being able to transmit COVID due to viral load, older, able to the capacity. So what does this all mean? Fifty percent of staff responded. There are about twenty-two percent said they were comfortable coming back without any vaccination. Eighty-five percent of faculty said they would come back with physical distancing under six feet if we had vaccinations and some routine testing. And about fifteen percent of the faculty and staff said, we're not coming back if it's under six feet. Family responses, greater than eighty percent, wanted to continue use of masks. Fifty percent of the families, this is what I just mentioned, want regular testing opposed to thirty-eight percent at the Warren families. Desire for presence of air purifiers, we're doing this. There's inconsistency across parent populations regarding physical distancing. So like I said before, thirty-three percent desire six feet. And i- it's just every, again, I go back to every conversation we're having is split almost fifty-fifty down the middle with regard to coming back, not coming back. There's school transmitter, there's not, there's there, you know, there's just nothing concrete about any decision we're making that will satisfy an entire community. We're going to have many community members say, you know what, you should be starting at the high school, you should be starting at the middle school. These kids need it more than the younger kids, or or vice versa. I don't think there's anyone in our district, including school committee members, our administrative teams here, and our educators, who don't disagree that we want to get all kids back in. And it's important that we get all kids back in. But what we wanna make sure is how we do it is done in a very thoughtful, logical manner. And yes, our hand was forced a little bit at the state level. But I would have been coming to you anyway in recommending, you know, that K two at minimum was gonna be a school I would be recommending based on the number of, the low number of cases that exists at Warren and has existed over time. And, you know, and the number of students who are there in the school, there are smaller numbers in the classrooms that we could fit. You know, Pete's got, say, a classroom of twenty-one, they're gonna be close to five feet apart. There was a re- a study done recently about three feet and six feet. And, you know, wearing mask and not wearing mask. And and there's hardly any difference in terms of being able to transmit, you know, COVID, and that's what they use as their test at three feet and six feet, if both individuals are wearing masks. Obviously, if you're not wearing masks, the difference of distance matters most. So so that's, yeah.
So I have some connectivity issues for a little bit when you were talking about test, about testing.
Yep.
And I think Kathy had asked you a question, and then I I got lost. I guess I don't want you to repeat the whole thing, but I guess the question on my mind is whether testing is going to be something that we would continue beyond the state program if we don't have a high enough participation level? And do you see it differently at Warren and Mendez, given, on one hand, people don't seem to be as concerned about at those levels, either staff or parents. But we are putting more kids closer together at those levels. So I apologize if you've already addressed that.
Yeah, no, thank you. So the staff at all schools will be continuously tested. So I think staff is more worried about themselves in terms of contracting COVID from kids at at these levels. So even at the elementary level, if we're not testing kids, which I don't necessarily think it's we need to be doing, we do need to be testing our staff. The staff transmitting, adults transmitting to kids happens more often than kids transmitting to adults. There's it's actually, there's like hardly any cases where it's the other way around. And staff to staff. So staff has said to me repeatedly as well, I wanna know if I'm hanging out with someone who might have COVID as an adult to an adult. At the high school, we're hoping to stand it up a week from Monday, where we can start beginning cohort A and then cohort B on Thursday. And we need all the research and talking to our team, because it's a lot of work for our nursing staff, is and is, we need to get around eighty percent participation. And if we if we're getting those numbers, then I think there's value in continuing the program after April eighteenth, which is the last week that the state will pay for. So we'll get in four or five weeks of it before we have to make that decision. Our goal is to get one school going, definitely the middle school as well, and then continue on with that process.
Thank you. Sorry if that was a repeat.
No, 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 it wasn't a repeat, no. And we're also hoping, honestly, I mean, the state has touted this as one of their key mitigating. And we're also hoping, honestly, I mean, the state has touted this as one of their key mitigating. Strategies, right? They've already extended it once in terms of the, the length of time that, that schools can use the pool testing for free. I would not be shocked with federal funds coming in if it ever passes, that they actually extend it for the remainder of the year. Then it could become a point for us. They're saying, take your federal money you get and pay for it.
Yeah, I was, I was going to say, if they extended, they might extend, based on his comments, I would expect them to maybe extend it. Until the federal funds are available to districts.
Right.
And then they're going to say, no, use that money.
Well, that's, that's quite possible.
Just based on his last comments about.
Oh, fair enough.
That's what he was saying.
Fair enough, so. Yeah, and like I've said previously, I don't count on any of the money until we actually have it in the bank. And then we can determine what to, to do with it. I think, again, I like to, Ed and Audrey and the entire nursing staff. Weighs in on this and I. It's their workload and they're the ones who have to understand and think of the efficacy of the testing. And to make sure it's appropriate and that we're doing it. For the right reasons and I, and I rely on them for that. I, I won't, you know, sure, there was a lot of resistance to doing the pool testing. Due to the amount of time and energy it's going to take and not feeling like we're getting, we will get the. The results, meaning the number of folks participating. That we need to participate to make it an effective pool of tests. That's why some districts aren't doing it, to be honest with you. They've done surveys, will you participate in the pool testing? And fifty percent of the family said no, so they will not go down the road of doing it. It's just not worth it. Questions on any of that? It's a lot. You've had a lot of stuff thrown at you tonight. So we'll back it up hybrid next week for the entire district.
Jim, I'm just worried for you more the logistical nightmare where you only really have twenty-two percent of the staff saying they'll come back. Vaccination, like, you know, twelve thousand appointments disappeared today in two hours.
Yep.
And so when it opens up on. A week from today for the teachers to start making their appointments, you're already nearly a third of the way through March. Trying to open up April fifth, I don't think the teachers can really count on the fact that they're going to get a shot. Before we open, and if we only have twenty-two percent of teachers saying they're willing to come back, like. Are we setting, like, the state is requiring something, but we may not have the teachers to do it. I think, I think we need to sort of pulse our teachers a little bit deeper on the question that of whether they will come back without it.
Listen, I, I don't know if I want to spend a lot of time with that, Erin, to be honest with you. I mean, only fifty percent of the people responded first and foremost. Secondly, this is, we're opening on April fifth. And I know the governor has also mentioned yesterday, he's going to stand up two weekends of just for educators. At mass sites. So we don't have the details of that, but he, he said that specifically, I think partly because. You know, President Biden has said he wants a shot, one shot in everyone's arm by the end of March. And if there's one thing that can be controlled, is the, it's probably the amount of vaccines that can flow into our state. From the federal government. And, and if, if he's saying, I'll give you X amount of shots. But they have to go to this, then that's what they've got to do. And I think he is anticipating that.
I think the other thing, Erin, the thing about, you know, the timing of that inquiry, I think was. Correct me if I'm wrong, it's sort of a different context, right? Right, I mean, the reality is.
Yeah.
They have to go to work, you know, I mean, that's, that the job is to teach. And I would anticipate people answered a question when they thought they had a choice in the matter. They may answer it differently than if somebody said, look, you know, school's opening, you're supposed to come in. You know, Jim has already done a lot of the work of talking to staff at both schools and they seem to be engaged, so I. I appreciate the concern and maybe it'll come to fruition to some degree, but I think the reality is. Think our staff are professionals and.
They are.
And they need to show up for work.
Yep. So that's all I have.
Any other questions or comments on this? Before I move on to the next item and no meeting tomorrow.
No meetings tomorrow, sorry. Yep, I usually send that out right now.
Anything else? Okay, so let's move to the next item on the agenda is the superintendent's contract. So this is a culmination of a process that started a long time ago, actually, early last year. We entered into negotiations with Mr. Adams to amend his contract. And it was taking some time and then COVID hit, so just about like everything else, it went on to the back burner. And we are pleased that we have revisited that, we've resolved it. And Mr. Adams will be with us for the next six years. The contract will be available on our website for anyone who's interested in more details. And I'm just asking tonight for the committee to approve the, it's restated amended. And renewed employment agreement for Mr. Adams.
I move to approve the agreement as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor, Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Erin?
Aye.
An aye for me as well, thank you. And.
Stick them with us, Jim.
Yay. And Kathy, do you have warrant approvals tonight?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Um, I gotta find them. Hold on, oh my gosh. All right, I gotta get to my. There we go, let me see. I've got it right here. Okay, between February nineteenth, twenty twenty-one and March fourth, twenty twenty-one, I Kathleen Bates. Authorized by my signature, payables in the amount of. Three hundred forty-nine thousand, three hundred thirty-two dollars and eight cents. This includes general fund expenses of two hundred twenty-nine thousand, three hundred seventy-two dollars and fifty-four cents. Revolving expenses of sixty-four thousand, six hundred twenty-four dollars and sixty-two cents. Grant expenses of fifty-five thousand, three hundred twenty-six dollars and seventeen cents. And meals tax expenses of eight dollars and seventy-five cents. I also signed off on one million, seventy-five thousand, five hundred fifty-five dollars and forty-six cents of payroll.
Thank you, Kathy.
Welcome.
All right, moving on to the minutes, we'll start with January twenty-ninth. Does anybody have anything on those?
Nope, they look good to me. Anybody else?
Anybody? All right, let's move to accept the minutes of January twenty-nine, twenty twenty-one. Who's got that motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, Mark?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Erin?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
I for me, what about February fourth, twenty twenty-one?
I didn't have anything.
I did not. I see Paul shaking his head. No, no changes to there. Move to accept the minutes of February fourth, twenty twenty-one. Who's got that motion?
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor, Mark?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Erin?
Aye.
An aye for me and then the minutes of February eighth, twenty twenty-one. Any issues? No. Who will move to accept the minutes of February eighth, twenty twenty-one?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, Mark?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Erin?
Aye.
An aye for me as well. Jim, do we have any gifts and donations? You're muted.
We do, we have two, Plan A, three hundred and forty-one dollars, sixty cents for miscellaneous gifts and donations. And Ohio, Ohio pile, Prince Incorporated, sixty-six dollars, ninety-six cents miscellaneous as well, for a total of four hundred eight dollars, fifty-six cents.
Thank you. We'll move to accept those gifts and donations as presented.
Moved.
Second.
All in favor, Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Erin? Paul?
Aye.
Aye for me. And moving on to any member updates, does anybody have anything they want to share with us? Rahim, you've been sitting here this whole time. Hours. Do you want to tell us if you're still here?
Uh, there's not much. I mean, um, the fall two season started. So I've personally been busy with crack.
Excellent.
Besides that, there's not much.
Not much, right? We're in the, almost at the spring. Going to get through a few more weeks. Thank you and thank you for your patience. It's been a long meeting. Anybody else have anything they want to share about what's going on?
I have a couple of, a couple of updates. So trying to remember what I provided recently on the, on the Mendez project. So we have shortlisted CMs and put out the RFP, so the request proposal. And so for the firms are in that process, we had a walkthrough over at Mendez this afternoon with the four. Shortlisted CMs. So I think that's about it. We're going for Concom. The project is going for Concom on Monday just to. Further NRAD, so that's abbreviated, wetlands delineation confirmation, basically. And so update on policies. So we met.
Yesterday.
Wednesday, yeah, yesterday.
Yesterday.
I, my days run together. I don't, don't even know when we meet. So a couple of things, so we will at our next meeting be proposing two policy modifications. The first one will be a unification of the COVID travel policies. So essentially bringing in alignment, the student travel with essentially what we're doing with the employee travel policy. So talking with Ed and Audrey and Jim and Kathy, we all felt that that now's a good time to, to do that. Move with the vaccinations and the numbers where they are, so. The other one, we talked a little bit during our. Retreat over at Warren last weekend about the transportation. And potentially needed to adjust fees and, and things like that. I touched base with Jim after that to just talk about that in the more general sense. So our current transportation policy. It has doing prorated fees for new enrollments, people moving into the district. But there wasn't, there wasn't anything in there in the policy for. Situational circumstantial changes with a family. So say, someone gets a new job and they can't. They can no longer drive their kid to school. It's halfway through the school year. The policy wasn't written in a way that it would address that at all. So we talked about just a slight modification to the policy to allow. The superintendent or designee to. Allow, allow the families to request through the superintendent designee that when they sign up for, if it's beyond our normal deadlines. That they could, could request that it be prorated. And it would be at their discretion. So you can't just say, you know, I changed my mind. It was tougher than I expected. Things like that, but for real circumstantial things that come up. And then they could take this and apply it to anyone coming back. You know, enrolling in busing for COVID. So we took a more generic approach that can be applied to that as well. And so we're, we're basically going to have adding one bullet to the transportation. And so we'll have that at our, at our next meeting for review.
I think the next Friday meeting, right, Paul? That's what we were hoping.
Yeah, so we talked, these are COVID-related changes and they're, and they're, you know, either minor changes. Or if you're thinking about it from a four corners perspective of like warrants and stuff, it's relaxing, not, you know. It's lessening and not, so. So we thought that doing it on a COVID, next, next week's Friday COVID call would probably be appropriate.
Would we do that as a first read, second read kind of scenario, or are these just amendments that we could do in the first, first read?
We discussed that and, you know, two, two, two components to that, the first read, second read thing is our policy. And so we can choose to waive it at any point, but we also thought that based on these being either minor. So we're just adding a bullet to the one transportation, so it's not a significant change. And we are making a significant change to the student travel policy, but it's. Oh, it's basically a redaction. It's, it's removing most of the, the stringency of it. So we felt that one read should be sufficient and we'd want to get it out there. Sooner rather than later, just because it's also going to relieve the workload. On the nursing staff to help do the pool testing.
Thank you. Who else has an update?
Can I just mention one thing, Lori?
Of course you can.
Again, at, at the Ashback meeting the other night, Christine Cavany, who's the co-chair. She mentioned to me, if we had heard about, the town has an ADA self-evaluation and transition plan that's happening. The town is collecting residents' feedback. And I, I actually, I wasn't quite aware of it, but she, so I told her I would bring it up. If people are, residents are interested, they can go on the town website. They're collecting residents' feedback on. On this ADA self-evaluation and transition plan and actually it's closing out March tenth, so there's a little less than a week left. But the town was awarded a grant back December two thousand nineteen from the Massachusetts Office of Disability. And they're just trying, the plan aims to create a more accessible community by identifying. And prioritizing areas in town. Programming and facilities that need improvement. So I, I, I told her I would, I would mention it to get, you know, the word out there, so.
Well, thank you for passing that along.
Yeah.
Final words? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Erin made it, Kathy, you can second. And all in favor, Erin?
Aye.
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Paul? Aye. Good night, everybody.
All right, good night. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.